Madam Chair, we're ready when you are.
Good morning and welcome everyone to the Napa County Board of Supervisors meeting. I'm calling this meeting of March 25th, 2025 to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Manfree. Supervisor Ramos. Supervisor Alessio.
President.
Supervisor Gallagher.
Here.
Chair Cottrell.
Here. May I please ask Kevin LaMaster to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I want to do a quick schedule update for the agenda today. I had a request to move public comment up a little earlier. It's pretty earlier and early in our agenda, but I'm happy to move it to before the consent calendar. So what we will do, Clerk, is take public comment and board comments before the consent calendar. All right, and I also have an announcement about our Spanish translation. Let me read that. And thank you, Yasmin. I want to remind folks that as part of our ongoing efforts to make our meetings more accessible, we offer live Spanish translation at all Board of Supervisors meetings. For those joining us in person, you will need to use your own device and earphones to listen to or read the translation. You can simply scan the QR code you see on signs in the boardroom. Yasmin, do you want to point to one of those signs?
Yes, they're going to be right there.
Okay, great. And then for those joining virtually, you can listen to or read the live transcript of the meeting in Spanish via Zoom. Select Spanish language in your settings. Meeting agendas in Spanish are available on our website, and staff in the boardroom are happy to help translate public comment if needed. And this is just one of many ways that we are working to uphold our county's values of inclusivity and accessibility. And Yasmin, if you can repeat that in Spanish at the microphone, thank you.
Absolutely. Buenos dias. Quería recordar a la gente como parte de nuestros esfuerzos para hacer nuestras reuniones más accesibles. Ofrecemos traducción al español en vivo en todas las reuniones de la junta de supervisores. Para aquellos que nos acompañan en persona, tendrá que utilizar su propio dispositivo para escuchar o leer la traducción. Simplemente scan el código QR que verá en la sala de juntas aquí atrás. Para virtualmente pueden escuchar y leer la traducción en directo de la reunión en español a través de Zoom. Solamente tiene que seleccionar el idioma en español. Las agendas de las reuniones en español están disponibles en nuestro sitio web. Esta iniciativa es solo una de las muchas maneras en que estamos trabajando para mantener los valores de inclusión y accesibilidad de nuestro condado. Gracias.
Thank you. All right, and then the other announcement I want to make is that today we will be adjourning our meeting in the memory of Bob McLennahan. I wanted to read something about him here. Today, we'll close the meeting in memory of Bob McLennahan, whose photography captured the heart of Napa Valley. Bob was not just a photographer, he was the photographer. His images documented the valley's most iconic events, from our annual grape harvest to Bottle Rock. And they were the visual cornerstone for organizations like the Napa Valley Vintners and Visit Napa Valley. Even here, just outside this chamber, the board's official photograph taken just this past November is a testament to his work. Beyond his talent, Bob was a dedicated professional and a kind, generous presence. Even as he faced significant health challenges, he remained committed to his craft, continuing to capture the moments that make this community special. Bob leaves behind a lasting legacy, not just in the images he created, but in the lives he touched. We extend our deepest condolences to his wife, his sons, and all who had the privilege of knowing him. Okay, and with that, we will move on to item three, Pet of the Week. And Louise, who do we have today? Moose, it's Moose, okay. I think we might understand the reason for the name. He's a big cat. Okay, Louise, as we're walking, what can you, what can you tell us about Moose?
I just want to give everybody a heads up. If he gets a little overstimulated, I might just have to put him down. So if I need a little help catching him, you guys might have to step up, okay? So this is Moose. Moose has been at the shelter for about two months now. When he first came to the shelter, he came in as a possible hit by a car. So you can see his leg is missing. We had to amputate it for his... Yeah, okay. All right, we'll let him roam for right now. You can see he's full of confidence, he's a very big cat. So that other leg did take off a little bit of weight. Pretty social kitty, he's really, really confident when it comes to meeting new people. Since he's been here, he's been extremely social, wanting to go around people, especially the ladies, I don't know what it is, but he knows his way around there. He has been in a foster home for about two months when he was going through his recovery for his amputation. What we learned from that was that he's a big couch potato, so he likes to spend a lot of time just being around other people. If you find yourself on a couch, he's probably going to be right there with you. He does tolerate toddlers and dogs, so if you have any of those, you might be in good luck. But he is better about just coexisting with them. He's not super social in the sense where he wants to spend time with them. And if he does, it's going to be on a very limited time.
We call that parallel play, I think, something like that. Well, thank you so much, Louise, for bringing Moose in. And just a reminder that I believe Moose's adoption fees will be waived this week. Anything else you want to tell us about the shelter?
Not as of right now, but in the few following months, we will be going into kitten season. That is a season where a lot of the community cats start to reproduce, a lot of kittens start coming into the shelters, they start to overflow. Local shelters, animal rescue, so this is a perfect time if you find yourself maybe being able to give them a temporary home where they can continue, where they can continue to grow. We provide you with all the resources that you need, medical attention, behavior attention. The main thing we ask you is to give them a temporary home where they can continue to grow, socialize, and then when they come back up for adoption, they will be pretty much easier to tug at people's hearts when they come around, they seek for their attention, and then that's how they get adopted. So if you're interested in adopting, you can contact the shelter. You can email us, contact us, or stop by, and then we'll walk you through the process. It's usually really, really quick and easy, and it doesn't take a lot. If you live in a one-bedroom studio, house, all you need is a small bathroom to get started, and then you'll kind of figure out what works best for you.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. All right, do we have an, do we have an APB on Moose here? Thank you for bringing him in today. All right, and we have one proclamation that we will be doing today, and I would like to first ask for any public comment on this proclamation. It's the proclamation recognizing March 2025 as National Agricultural Month. Anyone on the phones? Okay, then I will ask my colleagues for a motion to approve the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Ramos, second by Supervisor Alessio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, and I know we have several people here in support of the proclamation, so I'd love to ask them to come meet me at the podium. We've got Tracy Cleveland, Napa County Agricultural Commissioner, and her team. We've got Suzanne Almaral, UCC Napa 4-H Program Coordinator. Sonia DeLuca, Executive Director of the Napa Valley Farm Worker Foundation. Michelle Benvenuto, Executive Director of Wine Growers. Kevin LaMasters of Trincaro Estates, Wine Growers Board President. Peter Rumble, CEO of Napa County Farm Bureau. And then we have a lot of 4-H youth, so I'd love to ask you all to join me here, too. And the guinea pig, yes. Pigs, multiple guinea pigs, okay. We'll get a close-up of them, too. All right, it's a three-guinea-pig day. All right, so I'm going to read this proclamation recognizing National Agriculture Month here in Napa County. National Agriculture Month acknowledges the vital role that agriculture plays in enriching our local communities and the nation at large. This month is an opportunity to honor the unwavering dedication of our farmers, ranchers, farmworkers, and the diverse array of local agricultural industries that work tirelessly to provide us with fresh, nourishing food and beautiful landscapes. California's farms, ranches, and plant nurseries generate over $59 billion in cash receipts. Today, more than 400 different commodities are grown in California, and over one-third of American vegetables and three-quarters of fruits and nuts are grown here in California. Agriculture in Napa County is recognized as the highest and best use of land, protected by the landmark Napa Valley Agricultural Preserve, established in 1968. Napa County has more than 1,700 farms cultivating more than 46,000 acres of farmland, resulting in an ag production value of over $1.2 billion in 2023. Napa's growers and ranchers exemplify a commitment to stewardship of the land, working to cultivate and enhance sustainable farming practices that reflect their innovative spirit and determination. With the evolving challenges presented by our changing environment, these dedicated agriculturists are not only focused on the present, but are also proactively shaping the future. The future of Napa County's agriculture legacy relies on cultivated The future of Napa County's agriculture legacy relies on cultivating the next generation of farmers, ranchers, and agricultural professionals. To sustain and grow Napa's agricultural industry, it is also essential that we inspire, support, and invest in the youth of our community and their guinea pigs, providing them with the skills, knowledge, and opportunities necessary to carry forward the proud tradition of agriculture here in the county. By fostering youth educational programs in agriculture, we ensure that the next generation will have the passion and tools they need to thrive and create a resilient and innovative agricultural future for our county. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 25th day of March, does hereby recognize March 2025 as National Agricultural Month in Napa County. We celebrate, honor, and promote the value of agriculture and the agricultural workforce in our county. We commit to supporting the growth of the next generation of farmers, ranchers, and agriculture leaders who will carry this heritage into the future. And now to accept the proclamation and say a few words is our County Ag Commissioner, Tracy Cleveland.
Thank you. So happy National Ag Month. Good morning, Chair Cottrell, members of the board. I'm Tracy Cleveland. I'm the Napa County Ag Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures, and I'm here to celebrate National Ag Month with all of you through this amazing proclamation. I just want to take a really brief moment to celebrate and thank our hard-working farmers, ranchers, and agricultural workers who feed, fuel, and clothe our nation. Their dedication keeps our communities thriving and our tables full, and this is especially true in Napa. So with me today are various members of the different ag organizations that we have in the county, and I'm very excited to see them here to help celebrate Ag, the Ag Month. And I'm especially excited to see the interest and passion for agriculture, starting with our youth and then transitioning to our farmers. So I'm going to stop there and then give them a chance to say a few words. So thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. My name's Suzanne Almeral, and I have the privilege of managing the Napa County 4-H Youth Development Program. And I just wanted to take a moment, on behalf of 4-H and the UC Cooperative Extension Department, to thank you sincerely for this recognition. We truly appreciate not only your support, but the acknowledgement of the positive impacts our programs have and the important roles that they play in enriching the local agricultural community. And I would like to invite one of our 4-H youth members up to say a couple of words about her experience as well.
Hello, my name is Penelope Hurd. I'm 14 years old, and I have been in Napa County 4-H for nine years. This here is a picture of me when I was only five years old with my very first 4-H project, which was my chicken. Now, thanks to 4-H, I'm able to raise chickens, turkeys, goats, pigs, and horses. I compete in these projects, raise food for my family and friends, and help lead these projects for younger 4-H members. 4-H has taught me to value local agriculture and the role I can play as a youth leader, as well as many important life lessons and experiences along the way. On behalf of 4-H and my fellow youth members, thank you for this recognition.
If I can ask my colleagues to come down to the well, and we'll do a photo with, with all the humans and the guinea pigs this morning.
How about, how about we stand up here? Because there's a lot of people.
Sure. Come on up, you guys.
Do you want to go down and hold the guinea pig?
As people are filing out, I just wanted to say thanks again to the FFA youth for being here, or the 4-H youth for being here, and make a quick comment that Ag Day this week put on by our Ag Commissioner and the Napa County Farm Bureau Foundation was a great success, and it was wonderful to see all the kids walking around there. And I'll just give a shout out to the St. Helena High FFA juniors and seniors who helped guide the kids around. That was great, too. So with that, we will move on to the rest of our agenda, and we will, again, hold off on our consent calendar items, and we will move directly into public comment. So at this point, it's an opportunity for anyone in the room or on the phone who would like to make a public comment on an item that's not on the agenda. So I'll invite folks up at this point, if you could state your name. And we do have the three-minute deadline, so if you could keep your comments to within that window, that would be great. Good morning, Ms. Werner.
Good morning, Chair Cottrell and Napa County Supervisors. I'm Kara Werner with the Napa County Bicycle Coalition, and I wanted to just provide a brief update today from a presentation that I was allowed to give this fall about connectivity priorities and to share some good news with you. We've been in touch with CEO Alsop and Director Letterer for some time about safety improvements on Silverado Trail in particular, and I hope I'm not stealing anyone's thunder, but I am very happy to share that they are now planning to add a treatment that we think will really make a difference in safety on Silverado Trail. And that's a combination of what we call edgeline rumble strips, which creates sort of a sound and a bumpiness between the vehicle lane and the bike lane, but also don't encroach upon the bike lane. So that, from the, I don't know if it's trankus, but it's the county line to the south up to Deer Park is what's being planned. They will also be adding buffers with rumble strips in them where the road width allows, and this is a proven countermeasure as well. I recently went to the Lifesavers National Conference on Road Safety, and the Secretary of the California State of Transportation Agency shared that 50% of the fatal accidents or collisions that happen are called roadway departures, and that rumble strips can reduce this type of crash by 51 to 64%. They're also a low-cost countermeasure in our own Vision Zero plan. So it's really a fantastic thing for the buck, and I know that there are already plans in place to put in a little over two miles, hopefully this summer, if everything goes as planned. I do want to reissue my request from the presentation in the fall, which is to consider adding some money in the budget, whether specific grant funding is available or not, to prioritize the safety improvement that can make such a big difference, not just to bicyclists, but to drivers, too. We had asked for money specifically for bike upgrades, but this really is an upgrade for all road users on Silverado. So as you go into your time budgeting and considering this budget, the next budget, even putting enough in to do a portion of that section would be helpful, just kind of inching forward in that progress. I know Director Letterer has a, has a grant idea as well. So we think this is fabulous news, and we want to thank the county for working with us on this and prioritizing it. And thank you so much for considering this as you, as you budget.
Thank you. Other public comment this morning? Good morning, Mr. Smith.
Good morning. I wish you, I was here for a different reason, but I am here. I'm Stuart Smith. I founded Smith Madron Winery in 1971. When I first came here, half a century ago, people welcomed the wine business because at that time the highest and best use of agriculture was cattle. The wine industry promised better, and it delivered. It created income as well as bringing national and international recognition to the Napa Valley. It stimulated visitation, in which, in which in turn encouraged restaurants and hotels, both sales and TOT taxes funded the county. It was truly the goose that laid the golden egg for Napa County. Yet today, we have a county that is no longer supportive of the wine industry. I now think of the county as the Department of Sales Prevention. Why does the county take the most hostile and restrictive position on ordinances? Safeway, Steve's Hardware, and Central Valley, pardon me, have, do not have strict limitation on, on visitors. Why do we, why do we have strict limitations on visitors? Why are we different from Steve's Hardware or any other business in America? Napa County is the only county in America that grows grapes and makes wine and doesn't allow wineries to host weddings. I just, none of us get that. The current attitude of many small wineries toward the county is that, basically, we're looking at you as the enemy. Many of my friends have been waiting over six years to get a use permit from the county, and that is really just unacceptable. Six years is just too long. Why would you change the definition of tours and tastings as laid out in the 1990 WDO to make compliance even more restrictive and, and to make the wine industry less competitive? It makes no sense. I strongly suggest that you immediately resurrect a definition of tours and tastings that is supportive of the needs of the Napa Valley wine industry. Under the same county regulations, one winery gets 2,600 visitors a day while I get zero. That doesn't seem fair. Doesn't, it doesn't tell us how it got there or why it's there. The database, as an example, says it's every, it's updated every six months, and yet it's dated February of 2019. Most of that information there is outdated, spoiled, and not relevant. Certainly, it is with my winery use permit. How can Napa, pardon me. Lastly, I strongly suggest, is that my time up?
Yeah, you can finish your thought, though.
Okay. Lastly, I suggest that you commission a report to see how your ordinances compare with other wine-growing areas in Napa County. You should also take a deep dive into the ABC Wine-Growing O2 License to understand that that license provides wineries with many important entitlements that trump the counties. It's clear you do not understand the wine industry. We need you to be more supportive of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name's Spencer Hoops. I'm here to emphasize what Stu Smith has just told you. I am the poster child for the abuse of Napa County relative to use permits. This county has spent over $2.5 million trying to ruin my family and my business. And not to add insult to injury, this money is all going to a San Francisco law firm that's going out of the county, that's not even staying in the county. We pay our taxes. Again, we're doing nothing more than the O2 license allows us to do. You keep saying, get a use permit. Who's got six years to wait? I might not even live that long. I just want to emphasize to you that the solution does not lie in litigation, and I read that you're about to start the thing, the same thing with Dalla Valley, you're going to be going after Dalla Valley for too many visitors. This is, this is not the solution. The solution is to sit down and figure out how to deal logically and rationally with the business of wine and the attraction and the money that it brings to the county and the prosperity that it brings to all the people that live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoops. Morning, Mr. Block.
Good morning. Good morning to all of you supervisors. My name is Kevin Block. I am the attorney for a group of neighbors in a lawsuit filed by Dalla Valley against the neighbors. One of the issues in that suit is tours and tastings, specifically trade tours and tastings, and how trade visitation is regulated in our county. In that case, everyone agrees that the winery does not have, that the winery's entitlements do not allow any visitation at all. The winery says that it doesn't need any entitlement for trade visitation because trade visitation is exempt from the use permit process. The, the neighbors say that trade visitation in Napa County is regulated the same way as visitation in general, and that a winery needs a use permit to operate in, that visitation is an accessory use to a winery and must be authorized by the winery's use permit. Your staff agrees with the neighbors. The rules on this subject have not changed since the winery definition ordinance in 1990. Every month, wineries, large and small, come into you from across the valley, and they seek use permits authorizing, among other things, trade visitation. So there are really two separate issues that sometimes get confused. One is a legal issue. What does the law provide in terms of regulating trade visitation? That will be decided by the court in our trial next month. And I am confident that the court will agree with your staff and with the neighbors that trade visitation requires a permit. The second issue is a policy issue. Should trade visitation be regulated the same way as public visitation? And that turns on your understanding of the public interest. That policy issue is for you, the elected officials, to decide, hopefully through a very thoughtful, deliberative process. My own view is that the board should pause before it opens that can of worms, because it's going to raise a number of very complex and difficult issues, including sequel issues. But that is for the board to decide. Does it want to review the existing policy and rules on trade visitation or, or stick with a system that has worked well for 35 years? None of the neighbors is against wineries. Several of the neighbors own wineries, including Patrick and Elizabeth Ogdele, who own a little winery called Turnbull Cellars. None of the neighbors wishes Dalla Valley or any other winery harm. We all want wineries to succeed, but the law is the law, no one is exempt from the law, it applies to everyone. So I will report back to you after our trial next month, at which time you can consider whether you want to open the policy discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Block.
Good morning. My name is Julia VanderVink, and I'm the owner of Erica Estate, which is a new project on Mount Vita. I'm also here to talk about the trade tasting issue in Napa right now. So my partner, Rob, and I are young wine, relatively young winery owners, and, sorry, vineyard owners, not winery owners, in Napa Valley, and we're viticulturists and winemakers by trade, and we started planting our vineyard in Napa a couple of years ago. As we look at our own future in the valley, the fact that we're able to buy land at all is a miracle, and it was possible due to some angel investment backing. So that being said, we have our tiny foot in the door, and we care a lot about the future of the valley that we're inheriting. So we look up to wineries like Dalla Valley as an example of one of the few small, family-run producers that's holding down the fort in this valley. I can name on like one hand the number of other Napa Valley wineries where a multi-generational owner is still farming the vineyard and making the wine, and Mr. Madron would also be one of those. You know, these guys are some of the best that we have, and it's, we know really what the next generation is looking up to. I think it's pretty alarming to say that the way that they and pretty much every other family winery in the valley is doing business for the last 40 years is suddenly illegal. When we talk about trade tastings, we're talking about a winery hosting a sommelier, a wine writer, distributor. There's, they're not parties, public events, or any direct commercial activity. They're business meetings, they're essential to the way small family wineries function, and I think it defies common sense to call that tourism. Our future business will not survive if all of a sudden trade businesses, like trade visits are not possible. The culture of family-run owner-operators that give Napa its greatest cultural value have been eroding for some time, and some of that's due to factors like skyrocketing land prices that are out of our control. But when it comes to things that are in our control, I would implore the county's leadership to be prioritizing policies that protect places like Dalla Valley, not further endanger them. The cost and red tape of having a winery in Napa are already prohibitive. We don't have one ourselves, but in the future, we'd, we'd love to have one. We'd love to make wines in our own facility. We currently rent space in a warehouse in Sonoma to make our Napa Valley Cabernese. We'll see what's possible when the time comes. You guys might see me again in like 10 years. But as someone who hopes to keep making wine here for the next 50 years, it feels important to be here today to make it clear that trade visits and commercial tourism are not the same thing. And to further clarify that trade visits are an essential practice for the survival of Napa's most culturally valuable small family-run wineries. I think it feels really short-sighted to hamstring our small producers when their success or what gives the or what gives the valley its legitimacy internationally that benefits all of us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. VanderVink.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Linda Neal. I'm the owner of Tierra Roja Vineyard, which I have farmed since 1987 here in Napa County. And I feel that any imposition on the use of my land, being told what I can and cannot do on my property, is inappropriate. But if we are going to have laws, what's even more inappropriate is to enforce them selectively. And so if we are going to have laws that govern the use of our property, I cannot think of a higher use than the preservation of agriculture. And the current laws that limit the use of winery space for parties and other forms of entertainment came out of the desire to preserve agriculture. If we are going to have laws on our land use, that's one worth protecting. But if we are going to have laws, they need to be enforced across the board, not just on those who cannot afford to, hmm, influence people to look the other way. So I encourage you, eliminate all the laws. Eliminate all the laws that apply to what we do on winery properties. But if you're not going to do that, then enforce the laws we have.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. Good morning.
Good morning. The buck stops here.
Can you tell us your name?
Yeah, oh, my name's Evan Roscoe. The buck stops here. Code enforcement has been allowed and encouraged to kind of run amok for too long. Over the past five years, I've been documenting and seeing their abuses. I've recorded and witnessed a pattern of capricious and selective persecution. When I first started documenting this, I attributed it to malice. There was some shadow agenda, but in the study of it, I found it's pretty much incompetence. Code enforcement and officers and supervisors don't know the law that they're supposed to be enforcing. Kenya Robinson Webb, for example, wrote in an email that she didn't know whether an issue was illegal or violated the code, but she didn't like it, so they should pursue action against it anyway. You might ask, "How does this happen?" Well, there's no formal training for code enforcement officers. They've testified to this. It's about a day where they sit in a conference room with other members of the code enforcement office and generally talk about what's going on. If there's an issue that arises, they go back and they talk to another code enforcement officer. There's no requirement to read the law. There's no formal training. There's no continuing education. This would also explain why there's been multiple Fourth Amendment violations by the code enforcement officers. These have been documented. These have been reported to supervisors. Nothing has happened. Nothing has changed. You know, the buck stops here. Napa's in freefall. The top grape buyers in the county are in the process of having their fruit contracts, buying half of what they have before. Last year, fruit was sold, not under contract, that had a 90% year-over-year markdown. If this happened in any other market, in housing market, in stock market, we would be running for the hills with our head on fire. Why is this not the response of people in Napa in response to our industry collapsing? Instead of pursuing actions against small fire, small farms, small wineries, people just trying to make it, the majority of the tax base here in Napa, it seems like the county is just trying to stamp them out with no real reason or legal mandate to do so. What are you going to do to help save Napa Valley? Because it may not appear it when you walk down the street, but this is worse than the Great Depression that's coming. It's, this is, this could be the end of times for Napa if things don't turn around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Roscoe. Good morning, Mr. LaMasters.
Good morning. Kevin LaMasters, President of Wine Growers of the Napa Valley. Thank you for your time this morning. I just want to talk about the squeeze on Napa's farmers and wineries, and the recent closure of three Napa Valley wineries is clear warning sign. Some believe our wine industry is too big to fail, but that's not true, especially for small farmers and wineries that from the backbone of Napa's agricultural common, economy. The industry is being squeezed in, by declining grape tonnage and outsized regulatory burden. If this continues, the consequences will ripple through our entire community. Napa's wine industry isn't just luxury brands. It's built on small, independent growers, wineries, and vineyard management companies to sustain jobs and local businesses. Eighty-four percent of producing wineries in Napa's AW and AP are small producers, with nearly half producing less than 10,000 cases annually. At the same time, declining grape tonnage is hitting small growers the hardest. When yields drop or contracts get canceled, they don't have the financial cushion to absorb the loss. This impact extends beyond wineries. Fewer harvested grapes means fewer jobs for the vineyard crews, truck drivers, cellar workers. Local suppliers, restaurants, and hotels also feel the strain. Even tax revenue tied to wine production declines, affecting schools, road maintenance, and emergency services. Despite these challenges, small wineries face rigid regulations that limit their ability to compete. Consider this: 75% of wineries in the AW and AP can't host more than 25 visitors per day, and 47% are capped at 10 or fewer. No other business must turn customers away once they hit the daily cap. These restrictions don't just limit revenue, they drive up tasting fees and stifle growth. It's time for change. Napa's policies should protect agriculture as our highest and best use while allowing small growers and vintners to succeed, which means streamlining the permitting and lowering compliance costs for small vineyards and wineries, investing in water access and wildfire prevention, modernizing visitation policies based on infrastructure capacity, not arbitrary limits. Residents can also help by supporting local wineries and advocating for policies that protect agriculture from overregulation and NIMBY-driven restrictions. Napa's wine industry isn't just about luxury bottles. It's about sustaining our economy and preserving our agricultural heritage, and if we don't act now, we risk losing both. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. LaMasters. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Alexander Pitts. I live here in Napa and own a winery in Berkeley, same difficulty of owning a winery in Berkeley. But I want to talk specifically about the relationship of trade tastings to an industry like wine, where we need an intermediary to sell our product, which is very different than a lot of things that are manufactured in the United States. So that relationship is very, very important. We, my business partner and I, Martin Winters, have been doing this for a little over a decade, and the relationships that we have with our distributors across the country is deeper than just a business relationship. They, these people are our friends. They have vested interests in seeing us succeed, and hosting these people, it's like seeing old friends. And this is not something that happens every day. It happens once a quarter, maybe. And it's one person in a car who traveled quite some ways to get here and see these places, and it is important that we show them the place that this wine comes from, as opposed to with this ordinance that would maybe step in between the winemaker and our trade partners, where we could go sit in my house or something, but that's not why they traveled all the way here. They want to see these places, see these vines. It's, it's an important part, especially this time of year where you get to see these vineyards in their, you know, in their regrowth stage, and, and that, that is a really important relationship that we're building with these trade partners. So I just wanted to stand up here and give my support to have that trade relationship with wineries in Napa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Good morning, Ms. Griffin.
Good morning. Morning, Board of Supervisors. Thanks for taking the time to listen to everybody this morning. I think it's very important. As you can tell, I think we have a diverse group of grape growers and vineyards and I think you can tell by the turnout today also that people are upset about the situation with the small wineries, regardless of what side of the issue you're on. I would like to suggest to you guys that we form a committee to start meeting with and working with the wineries to find a resolution. It's a, quite frankly, not great situation that we've all found ourselves in. This is a massive waste of time, energy, and resources that are so desperately needed in so many other areas. The loss of each old winery eliminates families, jobs, and community members. As you know, we are the ones that make up your community. We live here, we work here, our kids are here, we volunteer, and we give back, and we pay taxes. Our county is in desperate need of new roads, better living wages, affordable housing, and more resources to fight climate change and the never-ending fire season. In the end, I think we have more in common than indifference. I'm asking you guys to sit down and start the conversation with the wineries. Let's see our community groups, like the Napa Valley Grape Growers, Vintners, Farm Bureau, as well as our non-winery community, come together and come up with a solution. We need to sit down and talk and work things out as responsible leaders and as better examples for our younger community members. Wasting millions of dollars of our taxpayer money on each and every lawsuit is absurd, not only for our county, but for us. It's fiscally irresponsible. We want Napa to remain in the spotlight as a world-renowned grape-growing region led by family-owned vineyards and wineries. It's time to get it done and come to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Any other comments in the room this morning? Good morning, Mr. Walls.
Good morning. Thank you to all of the supervisors. I just found out about this last night, so I'm not prepared. This is going to be just from the heart. I'm the president of the Mount Veda Association, and I'm not here in that capacity today, but that position does give me the opportunity to see what is happening, particularly with the small, smaller members of our, our group. We're about 40 winemakers up there, and visitation is, is rare, if not precious and beautiful, because no one in this group of small winemakers can afford to get a use permit, and there are only about a half a dozen who have them. As a result, I have taken to buying wine from each of my, my constituents and putting them on a wall in, in the winery, so that when folks come up to visit, I can say to them, "If you like Mount Veda wines, these are others you might look for," because you can't go visit them, "but those are the labels you might want to seek out." It's so difficult. And then the surprise to me when I found out about this, about the trade tasting issue, is just astonishing, because my team will go to other wineries to visit, and that exchange will allow people to recommend one another and try to encourage and uplift all the members of our community. If you have 25 visitors a day, you can't give away three, four, or five of those spots to my team, because you need to have folks who are going to come and buy wine. That, I, I've traveled the world and visited wineries everywhere. The trade exchange should not count against visitation. It just makes no sense at all, because all these other countries in the world, all of these other wine regions, they do this as a matter of course, and it's, it's de rigueur. So I just cannot fathom why in the world we would have a situation where if there's a trade tasting somewhere, it counts against your visitation, particularly for these, as you've heard, small wineries who have trade, or have tasting visitation of 25 people a day or less. So I'm fortunate, I feel blessed, I have a use permit. It cost me a bloody fortune to get it. It took 15 years of aggravation and, and dealing with neighbors and the like, and that has just been a nightmare. But please don't make it any harder. We're facing headwinds in the wine industry right now that are astonishingly difficult and, and wide-ranging. So with that, I thank you for your attention, and again, I apologize for not having prepared remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Walls. Good morning, Ms. Benvenuto.
Good morning. Michelle Benvenuto, Wine Growers of Napa County. Thank you for recognizing National Ag Month and acknowledging that agriculture is the foundation of Napa County's economy and identity. Despite this, some activists continue to argue that agriculture is not the highest and best use of our land, and we should be removing ag from the AWOS entirely. Let's be clear, the intent of the AWOS is settled law. General Policy AGLU 20 was born from voter-approved Measure P and states that the AWOS is, quote, "the predominant use," or actually, the area in the AWOS, "the predominant use is agriculturally-oriented." That is directly from the, from Measure P. Voters locked this in through 2058, and while much of the general plan can be changed with the simple vote of this board, shifting away from the AWOS, such as removing agriculture, would require a vote of the people. Activists claim agriculture dominates the county, yet within the ag watershed, only 5.5% is planted in vineyard. With such a small footprint, agriculture is far from the dominant land use in the AWOS. It's also important to remember that agriculture in Napa County includes not only vineyards, but wineries. Sustainability remains a priority, but Napa's policies must align with industry realities, supporting both vineyards and wineries, especially small growers and vintners, without unnecessary restrictions that stifle growth and innovation. We urge the county to support policies that protect the industry from overregulation, from activist-driven restrictions, and from NIMBY opposition that make it harder for vineyards and wineries to operate. Agriculture defines Napa County. It is why this region is globally recognized and economically viable. Any attempt, any attempt to weaken the AWOS is an attempt to dismantle Napa's identity under the guise of preservation. We urge you to uphold the voter-approved intent of the AWOS, reject efforts to diminish agriculture's role, and adopt policies that ensure that long-term, that ensure the long-term sustainability of our wine industry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benvenuto. Good morning, Mr. Dodd.
Good morning, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Thank you for the opportunity for giving everyone else the opportunity to speak and present their diverse opinions. I did want to say thank you to the county leadership who have, after this issue has come about, this issue with trade tastings, there's been, it's a really thoughtful and helpful outreach about, "Hey, we understand this is an issue, and we want to address that." So I do want to recognize that. I do want to acknowledge that. You, I think there was perhaps a little bit of frustration and greater uncertainty, which I think is on this particular issue, which is really the last thing that we need right now, when county, the county team says, "Hey, we're going to, we're going to take a deep dive. We're going to investigate this trade tastings issue." And then now, we're actually going to release a statement to state, now actually, trade tastings is a regulated activity. So it didn't seem like there was much of an investigation, and in fact, that really, I think, has led to more confusion about this issue. It doesn't really build a whole lot of trust. And, you know, this confusion is, maybe it's not for some, but I would, I would let you know, it is, it is, it is for most. And I, if you haven't already, and I'm sure you have talked with some folks, some of your constituents already, that people are confused. People have always understood this rule much differently. And it's not just folks in the wine industry, it's current staff members right now that are on record, that are on, that are under oath, that believe that trade tastings are a legal activity and does not require express use permit authorization. That's under oath. You have two former county planning directors, a planning manager, who have all believed that trade tastings is not a regulated activity requiring use permit authorization. All five members of the 2010 Board of Supervisors, who approved the last amendment to the WDO, also agree that trade tastings was never counted as part of visitation. So whether or not this is the way that the county has always done it, it's, it's not actually even really relevant to that point. It's a matter of how, the confusion of the issue, the subjectivity of the term, the lack of defined terms. Wineries aren't trying to break the rules or find loopholes. This is very much an essential activity that is absolutely critical to our, to our wineries, especially our, our smaller wineries, our smaller, smaller family-run wineries who don't have the resources to have a formal tasting room and whatnot. This is really connecting them to the outside world. So I guess if, if anything, if we're going to establish that the county is going to establish rules, let's have clear, consistent rules, and, and businesses will, will follow that, the spirit of the law and what it is. But at the end of the day, trade tastings are not But at the end of the day, trade tastings are not what we consider a consumer, social, tourist tasting. They're absolutely different, and they have significantly different results and impact. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. And I'm going to ask our Planning Director, Brian Bordona, to come up and give us... Mr. Bordona, you came up and gave us a little update last session. If you would be willing to do that again, that would be helpful.
Yeah, that's correct. I just want to reiterate what I said a couple of weeks ago, in that there have been no proposed changes to the W D O, particularly as it relates to this matter. There are none contemplated, nor have been given direction to do so. That said, we continue to have conversations with members of the industry, county council, and staff to continue to look into this issue as it relates to wine trade tastings and visitation and marketing. Sorry, I don't have any more to share beyond that, but I will say that I continue to meet with individuals and have the intent in working together with folks and resolving this discussion.
Great, thank you. So to hear that you're in touch with individuals and industry groups at this point and continuing to talk with them on this.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Hoops.
Thank you. Chair Katrell, my name is Lindsay Hoops. I'm sure that you all know my name. The reason I came here was not actually to talk about the law, although I think that there's an incredible misconception I would like to dovetail from what Mr. Dodd said, which is, there's this odd impression that the wineries want to look and break the law. And I don't think that that's true at all. The wineries are trying to figure out what the law is, so that we can operate our business. And for somebody who's probably the only person who's actually gone through all of the legislative history, I actually know that, because during this trial, everyone indicated that they had not read the legislative history of the W D O, and they had not read the legislative history of the small winery use permit exemption that actually applies to Dolavalle and to Hoops. But there are some pretty important facts that have come up in this trial. One specifically is that we are allowed unlimited customers to the property for retail. There is no definition of visitor or visitation anywhere. The term "trade" or "public" don't show up in the W D O. That's Ordinance 947. It's about twelve pages and not actually that complicated. And what's blown my mind is that this group of incredibly intelligent women has not bothered to sit down with the wineries or come to see the properties that you are literally putting out of business. I have personally invited you, Ms. Katrell. Ms. Gallagher, I live in your district. So do my four children and my father. Ms. Ramos, your family came here to build a living for you. That's exactly what my dad did. And you have recklessly spent taxpayer dollars to put a working mother with four children out of business. You haven't bothered to come see what we do. I asked you, Mr. Alsop, to come as well. So did my father, and you didn't even reply to his email. Ms. Gallagher, you haven't replied to his either. We have been open hands. I have been the most... the worst defendant, because I have been so public about what we do, because it is not against the law. But we invited everyone before you filed suit. We actually invited a citation to avoid this trial, so that we could just resolve an impasse, and you refused. You wanted to make this public, and you wanted to shame us. This is personal.
Thank you, Ms. Hoops. Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Katrell. My name is Martin Winters. I am a small winery owner. My business partner, Alex Pitts, was up here a little bit earlier. I think the best way for me to talk about this is that, just kind of come from where I come. I grew up on the East Coast. I moved to Napa specifically to work in the restaurant and food industry. I've spent fifteen to twenty years of my life working in restaurants, and as we've all learned over the past few years through COVID and through a number of different avenues, that our wine industry is completely based on the fact for us to sell wine to a three-tier system, right? When I started getting out of restaurants, I started getting into wineries. And so I wanted to have a goal to hopefully start a winery of my own. So I did so in the corner of one of the wineries here. We created a small winery itself in the kind of like shadows of some of our mentors. And more or less, we wanted to build a business for ourselves, just like Smith-Madro did forty, fifty years ago, just like, you know, some of our friends are doing currently, by doing it right way, right? How do I get through that? I started working at wineries where they were under development. They were going through the permit process, right? They had the land, the permit, all the opportunity to do so, associate myself with that, and understand it. I spent a lot of time reading the ordinance on 1990 and how it works and how people get grandfathered into this. And marketing events is noted in this ordinance, W D O. So the only thing I've ever seen about the update of that is the 2010 understanding of this last sentence in the W D O ordinance, which talks about sales and marketing and to exclude weddings and things of that nature. But selling wine to our colleagues around the country is imperative to that and has never been distinctly outlined in that ordinance. So from what I can understand, if it's not, if it's part of sales and marketing, selling wine to the trade, then it's grandfathered into this 1990 ordinance. And so if it's not, I think we need to hear that explicitly. Like, if you plan to update the ordinance, put on the agenda coming up next in April, that you plan to do so, and I can assure you, this room will be filled with people, because we will make sure that they know about it. Now, I have a small family, I've been here for fifteen years. We can't afford to be in Napa. We have a winery in Berkeley, we have a permit with that county, we put our tax dollars there, we put our equity into that space, we drive to and from. But I live here, I pay taxes here, my kids go to school here. All of my entire life is based around this place. And so to give you a window into our world, I've just done our analysis for our business for the last sixteen, eighteen months.
If you can finish your thought.
Yeah, ninety percent of our business is done with the trade. Ninety percent. If I can't taste people on wine in this county, ninety percent of my business is set to suffer, right? And it's because I don't have the money, the equity to work with, you know, some of the things that a lot of our corporate people here are doing. You're seeing me here today, because this is what directly affects me. You don't see the CEO of Silver Oak here, no one from Constellation Brands is here. It's because they have the equity and the money to do this. The people that you're affecting aren't people that live in New York or the folks who live in Nevada. It's the people that live in this county that you'd be directly affecting if you were to change this ordinance or not allow it. So clarity is what we're looking for, and definition specifically. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Winters. Anyone else in the room to speak today? Anyone on the phones? Okay. Do we have someone? Yeah, come on up. Good morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Mallory McGillicott, and I own a networking organization called Bang Wine Country that is predominantly focused on promoting and helping the wineries in Napa, as well as Sonoma. I'm here today because a lot of my clients are affected by this, and myself especially. My networking organization operates under the guise of being able to have these types of events at our partner wineries, because we are all trade. And we host these trade events where we are chatting and talking about how we can then refer business to each other and further promote this area that we all love. I'm five generations born and raised in Napa. My family has been here for over a hundred and thirty years. We owned the property that is now Artessa Winery and sold that to them in the eighties. It's really important to me that you understand that not only are small wineries affected by this, but all of the vendors that work with them, all of the organizations that are not funded by T O T tax dollars like myself, are going to be affected by this. So it's not just the wineries that will lose money, it is also all of the other individuals that have families here, like my child who goes to Visi Elementary, and my husband who runs two wineries that are also in the permit process right now, that complied with you under your compliance program many years ago. The person that owns his winery is a small family as well, who put all of his dollars into creating what he's created for his family. He didn't have investors, he didn't have other people standing up for him. I am here today to stand up for all the small wineries that are going to be inevitably greatly affected by this if this is not clarified, for what we need to be able to do to sell our product to the trade, to then sell it to consumers. We need clarification on this, everyone deserves it. We appreciate your time. Go Women! I think we can make a stand together, and I'm really proud that we've elected all of women and that you're all going to do what's right for Napa Valley to make us shine. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. McGillicott. Anyone else in the room? Do we have anyone on the phones? Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you, everyone who came to speak today and listen, I appreciate that, and I hope everyone heard what was shared by our Planning Director as well. So at this point, I will move us on the agenda to our item number eight, Board of Supervisors Reports and Announcements. And before I turn to my colleagues, I just want to welcome back our staff member, Jasmine Elo. So with that, I will look and ask Supervisor Manfree to kick it off. Okay, we are going to move on to Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you so much, Chair. I just wanted to report out on a couple of things I had when we did our committee assignments. I did let the board know that we would be making a move off of the A BAG Regional Planning Council and looking at integrating that with M T C. And last week, we did approve the resolution of A BAG to create the Integrated M T C A BAG Community Advisory Council. And unfortunately for Supervisor Gallagher, we are not letting electeds be on that council. It is actually going to be a community advisory board. So you are relieved of one committee, this is my notification to you of that. And this will be really a great way for us to listen to input from the community. It has equity representation, and our county will receive one appointee to that. So more to follow on that, but I just wanted to deliver the great news to Supervisor Gallagher that you're relieved of a committee. Next, I did spend two days up in Sacramento on behalf of A BAG M T C in our legislative advocacy trip. Much to my surprise, I was greeted by Supervisor Katrell on the street, running down the street, which was a really great surprise and really out of sorts. I'll give you a high level of what we advocated for. One was for greater contributions from the CAP and Trade Program that is being negotiated to ensure that there are greater contributions made to public transit. We also asked our Bay Area Legislative Caucus members to support S B sixty-three, which is the four-county initiative program to fund public transportation. While that is not directly affecting Napa County, it's focused on the BART jurisdiction counties. It is important for us to ensure that we advocate and are at the table, since we do have constituents that travel down to the East Bay, South Bay, West Bay, and to San Francisco utilizing public transit. So more to follow on that. And we also advocated for support of the housing bond, that's A B seven thirty-six and S B four seventeen. S B four seventeen is actually authored by our senator, Senator Christopher Cabaldin. And that's to place the $10 billion state housing bond on the ballot in twenty-six. And one of the things we are looking for is for support within that and through other opportunities for BAFSA to receive a direct allocation to continue the housing portfolio that we here at Napa County are the recipients of $5 million through the Senior Rental Assistance Program. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Ramos. Supervisor Manfree, do you want to?
Sure thing, thanks for letting me have an extra minute there. So in the past couple of weeks since our last meeting, I've had the chance to participate in N V T A meetings, Save the Bay meetings, and also attend the Groundwater Sustainability Technical Advisory Group meeting, which had a wonderful presentation from Cal Trout Regional Director for Sacramento Valley, Jacob Katz. And if anybody wants to hear about thinking about how to better connect our wetlands to support fish species and habitat and make our water systems work better, that's a really fun one, so look that up. I also had the opportunity to tour the Public Defender's Office and attend the Napa Valley Vintners Local Leaders Tour, which many of us were at, and also participate in Recycling Awards event last Monday, which I think all of us were at. So it's been a busy couple of weeks, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Manfree. Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you. And yeah, I attended many of those meetings and the events and impressed with all of the great work that's being done out there in our community. I want to share that at the N V T A Board Meeting, there was a presentation on a study that was done. It's the Transportation Study for Accessible Transportation Needs. This was brought by, back in 2022, the Napa County Commission on Aging brought this forward in a summit that they gathered in Yountville and requesting there to be something done, because as we look at access and issues for older adults, transportation is at the top of that list. And that was shown here in terms of the barriers that are there, but it was also previously identified in our own community health assessment and Napa-Sonoma Area Agency on Aging Assessment. And that, so the survey, it's available on the N V T A website. It is being shared up valley. It'll be, once again, presented at our next N V T A, Napa Valley Transportation Authority, meeting. It landed on five top priorities out of the eleven priorities initially selected. Those are build partnerships with healthcare providers. There's a big gap in issue with our residents, our folks being able to reach hospitals for their appointments, hospitals within our county, and even more so for hospitals outside of our county. And to me, that's a real access issue to health that I hope our healthcare providers are going to work with us in terms of solving. The second one is expand non-N V T A transportation options and providers, such as Molly's Angels, Uber Health, and others. The third, as I mentioned, is medical facilities outside of the county. We have also the institute, a dedicated mobility manager, and recurring responsibilities. Folks don't even know where to start if they need transportation and who to call. So having a one-stop shop, a hub of information to provide that is seen as a solution and makes sense to me. And improve transportation awareness and access throughout targeted areas to older adults. And last, expand VineCo services. So I wanted to share that. Also, I attended the North Bay Workforce Alliance Board Meeting. I'm a new board member to that. Some striking data came out of a software that they have now. This put pause for me. According to their data, Napa County's population decreased by 5,560 individuals over the last five years, and is projected to decrease another 5,189 over the next five years. The county's population is projected to shrink by three percent by 2030, shedding nearly 4,500 residents. In comparison with California, experienced a net loss of 882 residents in 2020, which we know that was around, you know, COVID. And that's, the inbound was about 5,300, the outbound was 6,200. So it kind of shows you the difference between what's happening in our county versus what's happening statewide. And of course, we know those aging, seventy-five and older, is going to increase in Napa County. And I think if we're not the oldest aging community in California, we're going to be one of the top aging communities in California. The other thing I did also read in this report... The other thing I did also read in this report is that the median annual income for, monthly annual income needed for Napa County is $108,000. And as we know, infant and childcare access is extremely challenging, requiring 17% to 20% of the monthly income for folks. That ranges anywhere between 18,000 and over 21,000 annually out of their annual budget. So a lot of things going on, financial aspects. I love being on this, this new board. I think it's really interesting and illuminating and I look forward to more. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Alessio. Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you very much. I, I do want to hear more possibly from our staff around the possibility of looking at how we can do some of the work within our Roads Department around the rumble strips on Silverado Trail. I thought what Ms. Verder brought up was really interesting and obviously those safety elements dovetail with the work we do on our roads. Just curious how that might, we might work together. Last week, I attended the Civic Wall Conference where over about 150 electeds from throughout the state discussed policy and climate resiliency and those intersecting issues. So I'm going to try to be putting some, a summary together for my upcoming newsletter. Tomorrow night, in honor of Ag Month and actually Ag Week, I'm going to be moderating a panel regarding supporting our agricultural workers. And again, speakers will be Richard Mendelson, Pete Richmond, Lindsay Gay, and Cynthia Cisneros. I also wanted to clarify that as a planning commissioner, I spent five years visiting wineries and spending time with vintners and growers. And I continue to do so as a board member and I continue to reach out to vintners and growers all the time to understand what they're experiencing on the ground. As most people would probably understand, I do take my time in answering emails in order to be thoughtful, especially if I'm responding to someone whose family is involved in a lawsuit with the county. I have received, as I'm sure my colleagues have, many, many public comments. Many of those date the same concern, and I'm going to quote, "They say, 'I've recently been made aware that the county is looking to restrict winery access for members of the trade.' As Mr. Bornona said, 'There has been no new code language pertaining to winery visits or marketing since 2010.'" And as I understand it, those changes were at the request of the industry that were made in 2010. We have not asked for any kinds of changes in regulations. And as I said, I'm going to continue to reach out to wineries and vintners, vintners and growers to understand what's actually happening on the ground. I personally am not interested in regulating business meetings. Also, I think it's important for people to understand we're going to be updating our general plan, as most of you know, and that is a really good time for us to come together and create a collective vision for what we want Napa County to be in the decades to come. That's it for today.
Thank you Supervisor Gallagher. I'll go, I'm going to give a quick update, then I'll go to Supervisor Ramos and Alessio. Do you guys have some follow-ups? No? Yes, you do. Okay. So I just wanted to mention that I was in Sacramento this week when I ran into Supervisor Ramos on the street. I was there to speak on proposed amendments to the Brown Act to support groups like our local Commission on Aging, who would really love to be able to conduct meetings via Zoom. And so that was a positive outcome. And also, I was able to speak in support of SB 346, a bill that would improve collections of TOT from short-term rentals. And to be able to give examples of how important TOT is for our small communities is, I think Calistoga, there's a number between 57 and 60% of their budget comes from TOT. So that was useful as well. On last Thursday, we held an Angwin Preparedness Event with Angwin Fire Safe Council as the organizer and host. It was well-attended. We heard from four different fire safe councils and it's really great to see how these groups are evolving and getting more organized and proactive. And also thanks to the sheriff and the Napa County Fire Department team and Firewise, as well as our fire marshal and our fire administrator team who were there. This Saturday morning, March 29th, I will be doing a coffee with the council member. Council member Iris Lopez Ortega in Calistoga invited me up, so we will be having coffee there. Please come join us. And then finally, I wanted to say thanks again to everyone who provided comment today. I don't think we need a referral item now because I understand staff continues to work on this trade visitation question. I have also had a lot of conversations with small wineries on this topic to understand their needs here. And we really need a common sense clarification that doesn't blow a hole in our, blow a sequoia hole in our regulations, but allows very small wineries with low or no visitation to be able to conduct these business visits. So with that, I will turn it back to Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you so much. And I would just say, without repeating what my colleagues have said, I think one of the things that really bears noting here is that when we are involved in litigation, we are in fact a party and we have to be incredibly careful in what we can and cannot do. And that includes any messages and also any visits at that time. So I think that, you know, trying to, trying to be responsive is, is difficult at this moment. Certainly encourage everyone to continue to reach, reach out to us through the public comment, email, and channels because that allows us to ensure that it comes to all of us and allows us to properly make the determination of what is litigation and what is a policy concern. And it's important for us to certainly acknowledge our staff at this moment that is walking this fine line between policy and litigation is a lot of work. But to reiterate what Supervisor Gallagher said, and I think is incredibly important, this county has in fact moved up, this Board of Supervisors has moved up our determination of the general plan update because we do recognize that we are at a different place in time. The world is very different, not just for the industry. The world is very different for our residents as well, as opposed to 2008 when these determinations were last made. So that work is underway. We have our baseline data report that is being worked on right now. We'll receive an update in August and that is going to be a focal point of this Board of Supervisors, in fact, to address policy concerns and to make sure that our policies are reflective of our current challenges and also looking forward to our future sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ramos. Supervisor Alessio for a second comment and Supervisor Manfree.
Thank you. Since we're on the topic, I thought, well, I'll go ahead and say something. First of all, I really want to thank everybody who came out to share such heartfelt, you know, really knowledgeable public comment. I don't want to discount anybody's perspective, where they're coming from, their lived and personal experience. Being a small business owner of any sort is very, very tough. It, it takes a lot of grit. It takes money. It takes prayers. It takes faith. And it takes needing support. So I just want to acknowledge and thank public comment. What I heard is that there is a shift in terms of understanding what the regulations are in terms of the clarity and definition. And, you know, and we're, you know, from folks who've been here for generations to new business owners in, in the industry. I'm not sure, you know, what is the best step forward, whether staff can follow up with those individuals and have conversations with them to, in terms of providing clarity and definition. If we can have something presented back, I know we have the Micro Winery Ordinance, which will be coming back. Maybe there'll be an opportunity there to provide more clarity and definition. But I don't want to dismiss what I heard on public comment. I want us to be able to respond and provide at least those items. And, and when the time comes, look at opportunities that we can continue to evolve and, and shift in support of that industry, which is so paramount to Napa Valley. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Alessio. Supervisor Manfree.
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to say also, I appreciate people taking their time to come out. It is a lot of extra effort to get down here and comment in person and that's, that's, that's great that we're having these conversations and people are involved in the process. We have a really multifaceted industry and community and, you know, this is a big conversation and it's great that we're having it. I think there's some work to do here, parsing out the numbers and figuring out where we can find a balance between pressure on our resources, SEQA impacts. You know, there's, there's, there's a bigger picture here where, you know, there needs, we need to look at maybe what the existing numbers are really like, what the enforcement is really like. And, you know, like one question that came up to me is that if you have a daily allotment for visitors, how often is that allotment actually met? Because a lot of days, I'm thinking out of a year, there's still room in that, in that allotment. And so I just don't know, how seasonal is it? How much pressure is there throughout the year? Is, is this something we can't roll into the existing kind of stratification? Or is it something that, that really does need a second look in new policy language? So, you know, ongoing conversation and I'm looking forward to hearing more about it.
Thank you Supervisor Manfree. So with that, I will move us to our next agenda item, which is actually going back. Oh, good morning, Mr. Letterer.
Yes, this is the time where the chair says, Director Letterer, could you give us an update on your emergency contracting?
Director Letterer, we've been waiting for an update. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Steve Letterer, Public Works. Yes, we do have three, three sites we're working on, slide repairs under emergency contracts, and I'm required to report to the board at each meeting on those projects. So at Mount Vita Road 1.2, we had a downhill slide. That project is complete except for the paving. It's been dug out and backfilled. On Mount Vita Road 1.4, again downhill slide, the digout is complete. We're in the process of backfilling. We expect another couple of weeks of work and then we'll pave at both 1.2 and 1.4. And up in the Berryessa area, on Berryessa Knoxville Road at Maya Marker 4.4, which is across the street from the Spanish Flat Resort. This is an uphill, a slide that came from uphill slide, uphill that landed on our road and also undermined the road because kind of the whole mountain moved. We're in the, we've been off hauling dirt. We're still in that process, probably another three weeks or so, and then we should be able to wrap that one up. I will mention that at 1.4, the work we're doing right now, looks like it's only going to be a temporary repair. The slide appears to be deeper than we expected, so there'll probably be a permanent repair that will come back to this summer along with the other permanent repairs we're doing. So that is your report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Supervisor Manfree, did you have a question? No? Okay. That was a left, that was leftover. Supervisor Ramos did.
Can we please have a break?
Let's take a quick recess until 10:35. Thank you. Thank you. All right, welcome back to our March 25th meeting. We are now on Item 5, the Consent Calendar for Special Districts. Do we have any Board comments or items to pull off the Special District Consent Calendar? Do we have any comments in the room or on the phones? Okay, then I will go ahead and entertain a motion.
Don't move, Ramos. Second?
That is a motion by Supervisor Ramos, a second by Supervisor Manfree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to Item 6, the Consent Calendar. We have Items 6A through 6AJ. I do want to note that we will be dropping Item 6C. And that will come back to us at another time. Do I have any Board comments or requests to pull an item? Okay, are there any comments in the room or on the phones? Then I will ask for a motion to approve the Consent Calendar, Items 6A through 6AJ, accepting 6C.
So moved.
Okay, I'll do that as a motion from Supervisor Alessio, a second from Supervisor Ramos. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so that is going to move us. We have no Item 9, no Item 10. We will now move to Item 11A under our Administrative Items. This one is an item to reappoint Tracy Cleveland as the Agriculture Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures as authorized by California Food and Ag Code. So I will go ahead and welcome staff. Good morning, Director Presenyo.
Good morning, Tracy. It's fitting that it is Agriculture Month, so I'm happy and honored to be able to deliver this recommendation. The California Food and Ag Code and the California Business and Professionals Code require that the Agricultural Commissioner and the Sealer of Weights and Measures be appointed to four-year terms. The Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures is a combined position here in Napa County. In April 2021, Tracy Cleveland began her four-year term as Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures. Ms. Cleveland has over 22 years of experience within the Napa County Agricultural Commissioner's Office, and his recommendation is to reappoint Tracy as the Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures as authorized by California Food and Ag Code and the California Business and Professionals Code. And to approve and authorize an amendment to Number 1 of the Employment Contract Agreement with Tracy Cleveland to serve an additional four-year term as the Ad Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures through April 2nd, 2029. This position's salary and benefits is approximately $298,000 and is not changing as part of this recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Is there any public comment in the room on this item? Ms. Ben Venuto.
Hello, Michelle Ben Venuto, Wyngers, Napa County. Just quickly, we would wholeheartedly go with the staff recommendation and reappoint Tracy. She's done an amazing job, she does great outreach, great education, and is great at her job, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone on the phones? Okay, then I will bring it back to the Board for questions or comments. Supervisor Ramos.
I think one of the things that's important to note here is that when it comes to the direct employees that we have here for the Board of Supervisors, the three of them are here, and that is our CER, County Council, and our Ad Commissioner. The rest all do work for us by and through the CEO. And so it's a very special relationship that we have with our Ad Commissioner, and I just want to thank you, Tracy, and your team. I think that's what's really important here, that the contributions that you make, while this is an office that exists everywhere, it's actually very unique here. And it's very unique because it is so much of what we do, and no one needs to look any further than our county seal to be able to see that the importance of what we do here at the county relies so much on your office. And it gives me great pleasure to be able to remind my kids when we do have to weigh our food, when we do have to go to the gas station, that it is your name, that it is your office that ensures that consumers are getting what they are paying for, another very uncelebrated portion of your job. So it is my pleasure to make a motion to approve your contract.
Thank you Supervisor Ramos. Is there a second?
There's a second, and I did have, I think my, oh, thank you. Yes, absolutely, second, all the way. I just want to say, had a pleasure recently to visit your office, Tracy, and I learned so much, along with the measures and the means of the gas stations and groceries and scales and all that, which I had no idea had fallen within your authority. So I was impressed with everything, but I think what I was most impressed by was your team, and the respect that your team has for you, and how you work so tightly together. And that's true leadership, so I'm happy to make that second.
All right, thank you Supervisor Alessio. Supervisor Gallagher, did you have a comment before we?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I just appreciate Tracy so much. She's so professional, smart, and curious, and she's a great dancer, by the way, if nobody knows. But she provides such clear-sided and compassionate leadership, and is really an exemplary example of leadership in our county. And thank you so much to your team, we look forward to many more years.
Thank you Supervisor Manfree.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo those comments and say thank you for your service to the county, and also good job with team building, because I know that your employees and staff are just fantastic at what they do as well. And yeah, yeah, good job.
Thank you, and I will add my thanks for your work and appreciate your outreach and responsiveness to community members. I know you and I sat down with residents who were concerned about the impact of smoke from ag burning, and I think we were able to help people understand how invested you are in this issue and working on that too, so thank you. So with that, I will go ahead and ask for a vote. All those in favor? Just to reaffirm, I have a motion by Supervisor Ramos and a second by Supervisor Alessio. So let's all vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you both. All right, so we are now moving to Item 11B, which is an item to initiate a General Plan Amendment to achieve consistency with the Napa County Airport Land Use Commission's recently adopted Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. Hello, Mr. Bordona.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Cottrell, members of the Board. Yes, pretty straightforward item. This is a request for Board direction for staff to initiate the requisite General Plan update and related code amendments that resulted from the, I believe, December of last year, ALUC adoption of the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. Based on my quick review, there are just a handful of minor changes that are needed for the General Plan for consistency purposes. With your direction, the next step would be to go to the Planning Commission to get their input and recommendation to the Board, and then we'll be back to the Board for a vote on those changes this summer.
Great, thank you for that. Is there any public comment on this item in the room? Good morning, Ms. Eldridge and Mr. Letterer.
Good morning, Joy Eldridge, City of Napa Utilities Director, and appreciate the work staff has been doing regarding this effort. It's a big lift, we all know that, any amendments. But what I would like to just point out and make clear is that the City of Napa and Napa Recycling Waste Services have been working on important projects for the future of Napa. And that includes a 2014 SEQU document relating to a megawatt biomass gasification facility and anaerobic digestion facility on the existing materials diversion facility property, which is near the airport. And a new property was purchased within the last several years south of the existing facility for, really to support a one and a half megawatt biomass gasification facility. And really, that's just to, it's a little bit further from the flight path, but it is really to process materials that are already gathered on-site and really increase the efficiency of that operation. And it really fulfills a community need that reduces the amount of woody material that's currently on-site. It's being trucked to a landfill currently as it goes. And so really, the intent is to reduce overall emissions associated with that aspect of the operation, and to produce a biochar that sequesters the carbon in the soil. And the other anaerobic digestion, a potential project, would reduce food waste emissions. As you know, AB 1383, we are now required to gather food waste and compost that. And this would potentially allow the use of renewable fuels to then fuel the existing fleet that is driving around the entire city and county weekly, on a weekly basis, to pick up these items. And so both of these facilities, they process existing material already delivered and stored on-site. And so the ALUC, the Compatibility Plan, may deem these projects as incompatible based on this recent assessment, and this could truly be a detriment to the county's overall climate action goals. There's a lot of efforts as it relates to climate action, and so we just want to point that out and make sure that the bigger picture from your Chair is taken into account as we look at these potential projects and compatibility challenges. So biomass and AD, they've been contemplated for years. They've been publicly known projects prior to this whole ALUC Compatibility Plan, and they're really ancillary to the existing operations of what has been going on at these facilities for years. And so really, it's to really simply increase the efficiency of how these materials are processed. And so we just would hope that that is taken into account as these amendments and other documents are looked into for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Eldridge. I'm going to turn back to Director Bordona and say, I mean, I agree with what Ms. Eldridge said, that these, the gasification facility and the anaerobic digester are things that I know I've been aware of as things happening. Can you help us understand how, what a process would look like so those, the existence of those projects could get built into the ALUC Compatibility Plan?
So the plan has already been adopted, so there is no longer an opportunity to affect the language of that plan. The City was provided ample opportunity to participate in the development of that plan, and unfortunately, there was a lack of participation, and this project was not brought to our attention, therefore was not contemplated as part of the ALUC plan that was put together. Nonetheless, I believe we do have a path forward, because yes, this is a wonderful project and one that we would definitely want to support, and it's not about that, it's about compatibility with the land use plan. And we have been working with Joy Eldridge and her team on just that, with County Council, to bring into the framework, if you will, what is, sounds to be an ongoing project that has started back in 2014. So I hope that answers your question.
I think so, yeah, thank you. Director Letterer, did you?
Yes, Steve Letterer, Public Works, actually here with my Director of Aviation hat on. The airport followed closely the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan process, was very supportive of that and the way it came out, also supportive of the county getting its general plan and zoning and all of that in line with the ALUCP. I just want to say, in general, not specific to any I just want to say, in general, not specific to any project, that survival of airports is very much a function of the land use around them, and we should never take for granted that an airport is forever, as we have seen in San Jose and in Orange County. So basically, the airport, again, just very supportive of the ALUCP, may have screwed that up, back process and this county action to get our zoning and general plan in alignment. Super important that we could properly control the uses around the airport so that the airport is around forever. So, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Manfree, then Supervisor Ramos, and Supervisor Alessio. You're good, that's old. Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to kind of merge and weave this all together for my colleagues. I do serve as our representative on the Napa Valley Waste Management Authority with Supervisor Alessio as my alternate. Before my appointment, I did actually go up to a meeting and shared the news of our ALUCP update, and there was surprise in the room. And so part of this was our former representative on the Napa Valley Waste Management Authority did not attend, and so that dialogue was not there. So working with staff, we are looking at a path forward. I think what is clear is that everyone sees that this is of public benefit, and I think that that is noteworthy to say that this is different than other types of proposed uses in the area. And so staff is working with the City of Napa specifically on this, and I have made sure that we remain in contact in those discussions to ensure that there isn't anything that we could do, what I, here at the, at a policy level with this board. What is clear is there is a path forward, there is a procedural path forward, and staff will be supportive and in guiding that. But I think that one of the things that I wanted to stress in this, we are here, we're here on some long days, on some hard days on Tuesdays. The important part is, on those committee assignments that we do have, it is incredibly important that we show up. And if we're not able to show up and we have an alternate, contact your alternate, and if the alternate's not able to go, have your board aide to go, because this is indicative of just a failure of participation and communication on many levels. But together with the City of Napa, we're ready to move forward.
Thank you, Supervisor Alessio.
Well, I feel a lot better. Thank you, Supervisor Ramos. I appreciate that, and I appreciate just the transparency of kind of how this, how we got here at this place. As, you know, formerly on City Council, this has been a dream, if you will, not just for the city, it's a county-wide huge benefit. The third largest emitter of greenhouse gases and CO2 comes from landfill, and to have the AD and the biomass gasification would be phenomenal for our goals and climate goals in terms of reducing that. I'm not sure, I don't know the process of the ALUC plan with the timeline, so we'll have to try to catch up with that, but it sounds like it's locked and loaded, and there's nothing more we can do with that. So, Mr. Bordona, but you do, and again, it's good to hear, that there will, there is a way to move forward so this can continue to happen. And I also want to say, the city received a very large, or actually, yes, the city received a very large grant for this, I think it was the biomass, was it biomass? The biomass gasification, like 13 million or 11 million, it was a lot. But you see a path forward? Can you give me that reassurance? Okay, perfect. Thank you. And I want to thank Ms. Eldridge for being here and speaking today.
Thank you, colleagues, for your comments. And yeah, just to echo those, I think, so what the ask is here is to initiate a general plan amendment, so that will mean something that we will refer out and have staff come back with that language, and hopefully at that point, we could also get an update on this procedural path forward that you're talking about as well, because I don't want to approve an amendment that doesn't, where we don't have certainty on this particular issue.
I don't know if there's going to be an opportunity for the process of modifying the general plan to be consistent with the adopted airport plan to do that. The time to have done that was over the last two years, when we developed the plan and ultimately approved by the Airport Land Use Commission. What this effort's going to do is make sure our general plan policies are not inconsistent with that adopted plan.
Right. So then can, maybe you need to, or could we ask for some more detail about what the procedural path would be then?
For the bio facility?
Yes.
We are in the process, as Ms. Eldridge and Supervisor Ramos articulated, in having conversations with city representatives, to try to mimic what should have been done in terms of conversations over the last couple of years, to make sure that that ask, that project fits within the confines of the recently adopted Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan.
Okay. Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. I think that what would be best for us, just because of the nature of an adopted plan and to make sure that we are moving forward with general plan consistency, I think it would be beneficial for council to update us, and it can be a one-way, so I'm suggesting a referral over to council on forfeits override as it relates to the ALUC and consistency within this zone area on the biomass facility project specifically. I think we need to certainly be careful as to not conflate the issue of an override with general plan consistency.
Yeah, that makes sense, so.
Yeah, through the chair, we can certainly do that, so we'll put together a memo on that for the board, so you have better awareness of the issues, so.
Great. Thank you. I think that's helpful clarification. So with that, I will find out if there's any public comment we heard from Ms. Eldridge. Anyone else in the room or on the phones? Okay, then I will ask for a motion here.
Chair, I will make a motion to direct staff to initiate a general plan amendment to achieve consistency between the Napa County Airport Land Use Commission's recently adopted a land use compatibility plan in our general plan. Thank you.
Sarah, a second?
I'll second.
So that is a motion from Supervisor Ramos, a second from Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up is item 11C, where we will receive and accept a presentation of the annual report regarding the status of the 2008 Napa County General Plan and progress in its implementation as required by Government Code Section 65400. Good morning, Mr. Hawks.
Good morning, Chair Cottrell, Honorable Members of the Board of Supervisors, Trevor Hawks with the Planning Division. Section 65400 of the Government Code requires planning agencies to prepare an annual report regarding the status of the general plan and its implementation, and to provide copies of that report to its legislative body, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation. The Department of Housing and Community Development also provides a form that must be used for the housing element portion of the report, which contains a regional housing needs allocation progress report section and a section on implementation of the housing element programs. As you are aware, the Napa County General Plan was comprehensively updated in June 2008, serving as a broad framework for the planning future of Napa County. Since the comprehensive update in 2008, the county has updated various sections of the general plan, including an update to the circulation element in 2019, the safety element in 2023, and three updates to the housing element, which took place in 2009, 2014, and 2023. All elements of the general plan include goals, policies, and implementation tasks that collectively guide land use decisions making, making for the unincorporated Napa County. So on June 24th, 2023, the Board of Supervisors adopted an amendment to the housing element of the general plan and updated the element for the six-cycle planning period, which covers the years 2023 through 2031. 2024 is our second year of reporting on this six-cycle of the housing element. And for this cycle, the county was assigned a regional housing needs allocation of 106 total housing units, divided among four basic categories, 45 very low-income units, 16 low-income units, 14 moderate-income units, and 31 above moderate-income units. For the reporting period of 2024, the county issued 35 building permits, which is a slight decrease of three from our previous reporting period in 2023. This consisted of 25 building permits for primary, single-family detached dwelling units and 10 for accessory dwelling units. For reporting, the single-family detached dwelling units count towards our above moderate income category for our RENA. And the ADUs, the 10 building permits for ADUs that we issued in 2024 qualify, three of them qualify as very low, three qualify as low, and then four of them qualified under our moderate income category. With the end of the reporting cycle of 2024, we have, for our 106 RENA units for the six-cycle planning period, we have issued 52 building permits for the 31 that we were assigned, so we have zero in our above moderate category that, over this cycle. 13 permits issued in the moderate category with 14 that were assigned, so there's one more unit left in our RENA in this cycle. 10 units issued, 10 permits issued for the 16 low-income units that we were assigned, and 13 permits issued for the 45 very low-income units that we were assigned. There was also 35 certificates of occupancy for dwelling units that were issued in 2024, and we received also 50 building permits, applications for dwelling units in that reporting period. So that does it for the report on the regional housing needs allocation progress report. In the staff packet, you'll also see the general plan and housing element implementation tables, which report on the current status of all 159 action items contained in the general plan, and they have been updated for this reporting period by the various departments and divisions that are assigned the action items within the report. So that does it for my report on this. Staff, you know, the requested actions is that you receive the staff report, open this for public comment, and of course, we're happy to answer any questions, comments that the board may have, and that does it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hawks. Are there any public comments in the room or on the phone? Ms. Benvenuto.
I don't know if I've ever been up here this much in one meeting. Michelle Benvenuto, Wyngers of Napa County. We just were wondering, on Policy AG LU 10, it talks about new wineries and other facilities should be designed to convey their performance and attractiveness, and it's saying that there's an action item about maintaining a database of all wineries, including their production capacity, marketing events, characteristics, et cetera. This database was never intended to be an official document of any sort. I mean, I know it was a previous board that, you know, said to go ahead and use it, but it was never intended the way it actually is being used. I think it's, it's outlived its usefulness. A lot of the data in it isn't, and it was mentioned earlier today, isn't always updated, isn't always accurate. I mean, I know one of the items is wineries that are pre-WDO for visitation. It says zero. I mean, it's not zero, and that skewed all of the other numbers, so I guess it's just a little bit frustrating that this database is being included in this as an official document that was meant to be used for something that was never meant to be in an official capacity, and if anything, this database should be going away. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benvenuto. Other comments in the room or on the phone? Okay, then I will bring it back to staff for questions for Mr. Hawk, Supervisor Ramos, and then Supervisor Gallagher.
Thank you so much. While, Mr. Hawks, I appreciate the report out of what our actual housing element is. I think it is helpful to my colleagues to share that our original RENA number was over 1,000, and that is because the City of Napa took, what, 80% shift?
90.
90% shift over. So while that is, that is a workable number for us at this time, I can tell you that with the work that we are starting, we are commencing already regarding the next cycle of RENA at A Bag, we likely will not be as lucky with that, that number in the next cycle. I did, I did also just want to reiterate, I believe it was through the, in the micro winery ordinance, that for next year's general plan update, I had asked that we could, as part of this annual report, include the number of permits and applications and permits issued in that, so that it's not a separate report item. Did I just get buzzed? I, wow, stake gets better. I'm done, according to the buzzard.
I'm happy to allocate you something to finish your, yeah. No, thank you. I think, I appreciate both those comments, so. And thank you, Ms. Benvenuto, for raising the question about the winery database. I think we heard some public comment earlier today about the need to update it, correct it, and this point that perhaps we want to make sure that, however, the board back in, you know, the previous board that gave direction for this interim progress report and, and the item about maintaining a database, let's talk about what, what purposes that should be, it should be for, because I do think it is helpful to have some record of who's out there, what's out there, but it only works if it's accurate, and we should be clear about how we're using it and how we're not using it. I had a question, I know also my colleagues have some questions here, too, because it seems like this implementation table would be really important as part of the baseline data report. So, Mr. Hawks, can you tell us if this is something that gets transmitted to the folks working on the BDR?
We certainly can. I'd have to, I haven't been too involved in the baseline data report yet down in the Planning Division, but.
I see Mr. Bordona walking up to the.
Yeah, he might come up and answer a question on that.
Yes, this most definitely would be included in the baseline data report update. That is the status of our implementation items. We will need to be very clear on which items have been accomplished, which ones haven't, which ones are in progress, to ultimately inform if those general plan policies are still, I guess, desired on the part of the public and the board as part of our update process.
Great, thank you. Just to give an example, I see there was one here looking at, or suggesting that staff track very large residences in the ag preserve, and I think the comment here is there were competing priorities, so we haven't got to it yet, which makes sense, and to me, I think that's still a really important issue that we want to make sure we're carrying forward and probably elevate again, so, thank you.
Yeah, and we got a lot of priorities, so.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Okay, so I will turn to Supervisor Gallagher and then Supervisor Manfree.
I'll be very quick, you don't have to buzz me, but I wanted to make the same point that Chair Cottrell made about the winery database, that, you know, let's make sure we take a look at that and, you know, decide how we're going to use it, and if we're going to use it in some capacity that's official, that it's consistently updated and correct, and, yeah, really important. So thank you for bringing that up, and that's it.
Thank you, Supervisor Manfree.
Thank you, same topic. So I found the winery database to be incredibly useful. I think it really increases transparency of what the permitting realities are throughout the county for a topic that's often discussed. And, you know, any database requires ongoing maintenance, things change, and you have to be adjusting things as they go, and it's very easy to enter things erroneously into databases just by missing a zero or having a misspelling. And in my experience, you know, I've found errors, for example, in our parcel databases, and I'll go back to, in that case, the assessor's office and let them know, and they're very responsive about updating and fixing the errors because they want their information to be correct, and I think that's a perfectly acceptable way to help, you know, for the whole community to help this useful resource be maintained. to help this useful resource be maintained. It's just, you know, I encourage you to, if you see a problem, say something, and, and keep the, the data up to date, because it's, yeah, quite often just a small clerical error or oversight, or, you know, a permit has changed, but it didn't get updated there somehow because, you know, something didn't happen that day, and it's, it's not malicious, it's just how, how it is to maintain a big dataset.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Then I will ask for, let's see, so all we're asking for today is to receive and accept the presentation. So if we don't have other comments from the board, I'll say thank you to Mr. Hawks.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. All right, so we will move on to administrative item, the last one of the day, 11D, where we will receive a presentation on local campaign contribution limitations and legislation passed in 2024, amending the requirements of the Levine Act. Good morning, Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Mize.
How about now? There we go. My name is Ryan Fitzgerald. I'm one of your county councils' deputies, and I'm joined by Andrew Mize, a legislative and policy analyst from your CEO's office. And we're here today because on January fourteenth, this board requested to revisit the topics of Napa County's local campaign contribution limits and the Levine Act. So this morning, I'm going to briefly review the board's past decisions regarding campaign contribution limits and outline the steps required should the board decide to establish a new contribution limit for Napa County elective offices. I'll also highlight a couple of Political Reform Act considerations. Andrew will give an update on recent changes to the Levine Act, and then we'll turn the discussion back to the board and seek direction. So turning first to the Napa County's, to Napa County's prior actions on campaign limits. The Political Reform Act was amended effective in 2021 to introduce default campaign contribution limits for elective city and county offices. And for our purposes, we're looking at county offices only, and any decision by this board would not apply to city council or mayoral contests. The campaign contribution limits in the Political Reform Act is adjusted biannually, and for elections conducted this year and next year, the contribution limit is 5,900. That will be adjusted early in 2027. In winter 2021, this board discussed adopting a contribution limit for county offices and limiting the loan amounts candidates could extend to their own campaigns. The board heard from staff about the limits and enforcement mechanisms that other counties put into place, and the board directed staff to prepare an ordinance which would adopt the state's default limit for campaign contributions, cap the candidate loans to their own campaigns at 20,000 for countywide, or 10,000 for district-based contests, and would provide administrative enforcement authority of those loan limits to the elections division. The board adopted that ordinance in twenty, in spring of 2021, and it has not been updated since then. But in summer of 2023, this board received a presentation from staff about campaign contribution limits and enforcement in other counties with a particular emphasis on administrative enforcement options. Andrew prepared an updated version of the matrix showing where every other county in the state sets its contribution limits, and where, applicable, where they've set voluntary expenditure limits. And since the board previously adopted the state's default contribution limit by ordinance, any ordinance, any change to our local contribution limit would need to also be by ordinance, not by resolution, if it is the board's will to make a change. So as the board considers whether to move away from the default contribution amount, I'd like to highlight a few enforcement and regulatory considerations to keep in mind. There are various sections of the Political Reform Act and the FPPC regulations, which by their terms only apply to candidates who are subject to the state's default contribution limits. So for example, as outlined in the, the FPPC fact sheet that we attached to this item, there are limits on contributions from one candidate to another, and there is rules addressing transfers of funds between controlled committees, and those rules under the Political Reform Act only apply to candidates who are subject to those default contribution limits. And similarly, there are limits on post-election contributions and on carrying contributions over from one election to a subsequent election that don't apply if the county sets its own contribution limit. And a local jurisdiction also does not receive enforcement support from the FPPC if we adopt our own limit. So if we do decide to set a limit other than the default, none of the provisions in that fact sheet are going to apply, but we've seen other counties essentially mirror those provisions that they'd like to keep, and they then would just have to make sure that those are regularly, regularly maintained and assign an entity at the local level to enforce those rules, in addition to enforcing any campaign contribution limits. So in those jurisdictions that do use the default contribution limits, the FPPC can assess administrative penalties of 5,000 per violation, they can issue cease and desist orders, and local DAs can pursue criminal prosecution or civil penalties against violators. And counties that do adopt their own limits typically model their penalties and enforcement on what exists under the Political Reform Act rather than reinventing the wheel. So in most instances, that means that counties are explicitly authorizing their DAs to pursue criminal prosecution and/or civil penalties consistent with what's already in the Political Reform Act. But some counties like Sonoma only have civil penalties, while others like Riverside only provide for criminal enforcement. And then, since counties that adopt their own limits don't have administrative support from the FPPC, at least five have set their own local administrative enforcement mechanisms. Orange County and San Francisco have fairly large, robust ethics commissions that function a little bit like local FPPCs, their jurisdiction is beyond campaign finance. Kern has an appointed campaign finance hearing panel. LA gives its registrar of voters administrative enforcement authority, and the ROV's decisions can be appealed to a county hearing officer, and in Napa, we have something similar to that for the limited purpose of our loan limits. So our elections division can issue penalties and make determinations that are appealable to the county hearing officer for the limited purpose of, of loan limits. And then, San Bernardino is a bit of an outlier. They have a special relationship with the FPPC that allows them to contract for enforcement from the FPPC until the start of next year. There's a government code provision that would allow us to enter into a similar contract. But right now, San Bernardino is the only county that has such a contract. So I'm about to turn things over to Andrew to provide a Levine Act update, but I'll conclude my portion by saying that the board has considerable discretion to change its campaign contribution limit by ordinance. If the board desires to make a change, I would recommend the board consider whether to replicate the portions of the Political Reform Act that would no longer apply if we set our own limit, and also to consider who we would put in charge of enforcing our local contribution and any of those rules that we decide to, to add back in. And I think the plan is to open this up for discussion after the Levine Act update, but before we pivot, I did want to see if there are any clarifying questions with the acknowledgement that I will be here during the discussion portion as well.
Great, and I think your suggestion is we move to Mr. Mize and then come back. So I think, I don't see this thing lighting up, so I'll go ahead and move to Mr. Mize.
Good morning. This portion of our presentation will focus on legislative and regulatory changes to the Levine Act, which is a portion of the Political Reform Act that was originally intended to limit pay-to-play in the context of appointed members, rather than elected members, of state and local boards and commissions. And those boards and commissions had to have decision-making authority or influence over licenses, permits, certain contracts, and other entitlements for use. The Levine Act prohibits parties to, participants in, and agents for parties and participants in certain types of proceedings that result in a final decision for making cash contributions to decision-makers while a proceeding is pending and, and for twelve months after a decision on the matter at hand. Participants are most easily understood as neighbors or business partners of parties to a proceeding. The Levine Act allows officials to cure would-be violations by returning donations. If a violation is not cured, the official cannot participate in a decision during the pendency of the decision. If a violation is not cured following the decision, those, that can result in penalties from the FPPC. The law prescribes a twelve-month look-back period for donations during a pendant, during the pendency of a proceeding, and a twelve-month look-forward period from the date of the donation. Donations over the set threshold that fall within these two periods must be returned within that set cure period. Finally, disclosure of contributions over the threshold is required for the twelve-month look-back period, effective while a decision is pending, regardless of what the contribution has been, has already been or will be returned, though if an intended return has yet to occur, an additional disclosure is required within sixty days of the return of that contribution. A little bit of history, in 2022, the California Legislature extended the law's applicability to all officials with decision-making authority or influence. That includes county supervisors. Your board subsequently heard a presentation on that particular update from my colleague here, and then in 2024, the legislature again changed the law, this time in ways intended to make your Levine Act obligations easier to understand and follow. I'll outline all seven changes, major and minor, and provide some examples to illustrate the major changes. The first major change is a threshold increase. Previously, the threshold for disclosure and disqualification was $250. That's been raised to $500, and that is within any twelve-month period. For example, let's say you're a member of the planning commission, and a party files an application for a vineyard conversion project on January first, 2025. Here, we'll pretend that you're notified of the commencement of the proceedings on the same day they're filed. In reality, the law delineates that your cure period starts when you know or should know about the proceeding, which is complicated. The party also contributes $500 to your campaign committee that same day as the filing of the application, January first, 2025. The proceeding extends through 2025, and then on January one, 2026, the party contributes another $500 to your campaign committee. The party does not violate the Levine Act, and neither disqualification nor disclosure are required in this case because you have not received more than $500 during any twelve month period. The second major change is an expanded cure period following a decision. Under 2023 law, you had just fourteen days to return an otherwise illegal contribution in the look-forward period, the twelve months following your contribution. This meant there were two different cure periods, depending on where you were in the proceeding. You had thirty days to cure in the pre-decision look-back period, and fourteen days in the post-decision look-forward period. Under the 2024 changes, you now have thirty days to return otherwise illegal contributions in twelve months following a decision. So no matter where you are in the proceeding, it's thirty days to cure. For example, let's say you render a decision on a zoning variance on January one, 2025. On July one, 2025, the party to the decision contributes $2,000 to your campaign committee. You become aware of the donation the same day. Under prior law, you had fourteen days to return the donation, or until July fifteenth, 2025. Under new 2024 law, you now have thirty days from July one, and it must be returned by July thirty-one, 2025, to cure the violation. The third major change is that you are now permitted to participate in a decision even if you've received and know about an otherwise disqualifying contribution, so long as you disclose the contribution before the decision and return the contribution within thirty days of the decision. You also have to publicly confirm that return in a second disclosure, which must be completed within sixty days of the return. This wasn't previously allowed. If you hadn't returned a disqualifying contribution before the decision, you are barred from participation in the decision, and you still had to disclose it. Now you can disclose and participate, so long as you cure, you cure the violation within thirty days of the decision and issue the disclosure confirming the cure. Here's an example, while a proceeding is pending, you receive a donation of $5,000 to your campaign committee from a party to the proceeding, you can participate in the decision, under 2024 law, so long as you disclose the contribution and then actually return it within thirty days of that decision, and then disclose that return within sixty days of the return. Whether you choose to participate and return the contribution or recuse yourself and keep the contribution, just want to reiterate that you must disclose the contribution either way, at least once before the decision. Fourth and final significant change is to decouple the contributions of parties and participants from their agents. Previously, you had to aggregate the contributions of parties and their agents, an engineering firm, a law firm, an architecture firm, to give a few examples, and the aggregated contribution was subject to that threshold, now $500. But at the time, it was $250 between all those parties. Now you can decouple the contributions of an agent from their clients. A law firm can contribute $500, and an architecture firm can contribute $500, and the engineering firm can contribute $500, and so can their client, all over the course of that twelve month period, and none of those contributions violate the law. Three very minor changes, and then I'm done. The legislative changes included updates the definitions of participant, agent, license permit, or other entitlement for use, and when a proceeding is pending. Those definitions were pulled pretty much directly from existing regulations, so it should not be that big a change. And to the extent that you are interested in more details, I'm happy to send out those The second-to-last minor update is that disclosures must occur prior to rendering any decision rather than before rendering any decision. And finally, there is a clarification that contributions are only disqualifying, and disclosures are only required when the officer or deciding body has actual authority to render a decision or influence a future decision. They are not required if a body does not have the actual legal authority to render or influence any decision. Thank you. I'll turn it back over to Ryan really quick. Yes, I'm so sorry. My colleague, when we talk about participation despite an otherwise disqualifying contribution, if you receive an otherwise disqualifying contribution and want to participate in the decision anyway, your pre-decision disclosure has to not only disclose the contribution, but also disclose your intent to return the contribution. My apologies for the oversight. I'll turn it back over to my colleague for a little bit on local actions that we've undertaken to make your obligations on the Levine Act easier. Thank you.
So in 2023, after we last talked about the Levine Act, our action item coming out was to introduce some language to our agenda items so that we would put participants on notice, and we also put together some forms for members of the public to fill out when they were seeking county contracts, or when they were seeking a PBS product application or appeal. So at the start of this year, and you'll see this on page one of today's agenda, we've updated it so that it reflects the current dollar value, and we're also in the process of revising those forms for contracts and project applications and appeals to reflect the, the recent changes to the Levine Act. So today, Andrew and I aren't making a recommendation on whether to keep or change our campaign limits, rather, we hope that the information presented serves as a broad overview and a useful jumping-off point for discussions about whether to change the contribution limit for Napa County elective offices, whether to introduce local versions of any Political Reform Act provisions, which by their terms would stop applying if we adopt a limit other than the state's, and how we would go about enforcing local limits and other campaign rules locally, should we lose FPPC support. So we're here to answer questions about contribution limits and the Levine Act to the best of our abilities, and at the conclusion of the board's discussion, we'll look for further direction to perhaps return with a narrower focus on topics of particular interest to the board, or if you've heard everything you need to hear, maybe an ordinance, maybe not. But thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you both very much. At this point, I'm going to open it up for public comment, so anyone in the room who wishes to speak on this item, be great. Good morning, Ms. Macklin. Good morning, Ms. Macklin.
Good morning. My name is Sharon Macklin. I'm representing progressive women of Napa Valley, and I want to thank whoever put together today's agenda for having our issue, which is limiting campaign contributions last, because it's forced me to sit through the entire agenda, and it reminded me of how important YDU is. And even though I'm not involved, I don't drink wine or anything, but the wine industry really is the engine that runs our county, so I'm glad you're taking good care of it. So back to my issue, progressive women. At the last hearing we had a couple of years ago at this point, the League of Women Voters was here and supported it. Vision 2050, I talked to Eve Kahn this morning. She couldn't make it today, but they still endorse changing the limits on campaign contributions. We, progressive women, suggested four or five changes to you. I know they were pretty complicated, and at this point, we suggest that you adopt a, start by adopting a limit to the per-person, per-election contribution, and we think looking at around $2,000 to $2,500 would be a good starting point. And over the next few years, we would probably come back with some of the other issues that we have presented in the past. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Ms. Macklin. Mr. Tudor, did you have a comment that you wanted to make today?
I didn't, but I do have a question, and I'm here as your enforcement officer if you have any questions as you move forward. I've been exchanging emails with Mr. Fitzgerald about a question raised by one of your campaign treasurers, and I want to make clear one thing, make sure I understand. I believe that having a local ordinance, whether we adopt the state limit or not, still relieves us of the other administrative points that Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned, moving campaign money, starting a new campaign committee each election. Is that correct, Mr. Fitzgerald?
What was the question? The question was...
Even if we adopt our own ordinance and it adopts the state limits, it also does not apply those other administrative rules to Napa County for elected officials.
So the fact that we've adopted a, we've adopted a campaign contribution limit which is equal to the state's limit, does that have the effect of putting us in a position where, for the purposes of the FPPC, we've adopted a campaign contribution limit such that these other provisions outlined in that attachment would not apply locally? That has not been our understanding historically, but as you noted, a treasurer did reach out to your office with that question, so I've relayed that question explicitly to the FPPC. If indeed the will of the board is to maintain our current contribution limit, that would be something that we would, that would be significant potentially, but if the will of the board is to set a different limit, that conversation would be moot anyway.
But, so have you had received a final answer from the FPPC as to whether adopting the state limits by local ordinance relieves local officials of those other administrative provisions? That was my understanding, but I may have misread it.
This is a great question, so why don't we do this through the chair and ask for direction on this item? I had a similar question about when AB 571 applies and does not apply, so if we could, it sounds like there's a couple of different scenarios that we're looking at. So if, when you do hear back, I think it would be really helpful to get that.
Certainly, yeah, it's pending. We, I was in touch with them last week about this and had not heard back, but we'll let you know.
Great, and thank you, Mr. Tudor. So, so to my colleagues, if there's questions about enforcement, we could ask Mr. Tudor to come back up and speak to that. So at this point, I will open it up for discussion, and I see Supervisor Gallagher and then Supervisor Ramos with lights on.
Thank you. I just wanted to sort of set the stage that I was one of the supervisors who asked for this to be discussed, I think, in 2022, and we discussed it in 2023, and then we're here in 2024. So this has been a bit of an ongoing discussion, but the purpose really was to try to get money out of local elections and make that process more equitable, sort of level the playing field, make sure that everyone had access to running for office, and I've been committed to that. I know that I've heard many of my colleagues say that they are committed to that as well. I don't want to talk about the enforcement part right at this moment, but I do want to say that I do support looking at a campaign contribution limit for individuals. Right now, that limit per the state is $5,900, so I'm just going to kind of put out there an idea of looking at a limit of 3,000 to 3,500. Also, what didn't come up in the presentation but is in our, is in our matrix that we received and was part of the, part of the public packet, is the issue of expenditure limits. There are quite a few counties that have voluntary expenditure limits. I think that those are even, you know, in connection with an individual limit, do a lot more to, for the idea of getting money out of our, out of our elections process. I think that would have a really significant positive impact, so I would like to hear more about that. I'd like staff to look more into the expenditure limits and come back to us. I like what I saw in Kern County as an example. And then I think I'd just like to say that, Mr. Fitzgerald, it was interesting to hear about a possible contract with the FPPC for enforcement. I think that would be really, really interesting to know more about as well. So that's what I have for now.
Thank you, Chair Gallagher. Other comments?
You're the chair.
Thank you for, still, right. Thank you, Supervisor Gallagher. Other comments to Supervisor Ramos and then Supervisor Alessio.
Thank you so much. When it comes, I too am interested in what the FPPC's response is on AB 571. I mean, when we did this first iteration amendment in 2021, one of the things that we were told is that for any time we adopted a local contribution, we were responsible on the local contribution enforcement side, but that everything else remained. And looking at the fact sheet from the FPPC, that does not actually seem clear on 571, so I certainly would like to have clarification on that. I'm going to start first with the, with the first ones on the Levine Act, and I'm going to suggest that one of the tools, I don't see in my agenda, the sheet that we fill out. I didn't see it attached. I don't know if anyone else saw it attached, but I think it would be helpful to update the sheet to reflect whether you have received the contribution, whether you intend to vote, whether you intend to return, so that we're not, that it's a check-the-box for us, so that we can have a clear record for the clerk's benefit and for FPPC questioning, and so that, similar to those forms that kind of track everything we do on election side of when you turn something in, what date did you know, what date did you receive, what amount, do you intend to vote, do you intend to return, what day did you return, so that it's a, it's a running total on, on anything. I think that that would be super helpful on, on Levine Act. Turning to campaign contribution limits, now, I am going to go ahead and say what I'd like to see, but I'm going to start off by saying to my colleagues, any changes on a local ordinance are an incredible draw on staff time, an incredible draw. There is no FPPC support in getting us here. So in looking at this, beyond just reducing the contribution limit, and to what Supervisor Gallagher shared with us of what the objective here in bringing this up is, I do not disagree. I can say personally, I have, I have struggled with the idea of how much campaigns cost. I did share with a few of my colleagues that when this last election I ran, I imposed upon myself a total contribution, a total campaign cost of $125,000, which, to put it in context, was more than my salary for this position at the time, and was probably only achievable because I was the incumbent, right? So I just want to be very level-setting on the reality of what this, this all means. I think that the $3,000 to $3,500 suggestion by Supervisor Gallagher is more than reasonable, but anything that draws a limit needs to have an inflator on it so that it does not have to come back to this board on an annualized basis. I just do not want to have to impose additional staff time on that. It also needs to, by incorporation by reference to the FPPC, somehow tied to the inflator percentage that the FPPC is using, so that we are not passing judgment of, you know, throw in 20% increase on an annualized basis or, or whatever. It also needs to be able to, if there is an annualized increase, and I will admit that I haven't studied up on the frequency of the increases to the FPPC, but we need to look at retroactivity and how that applies to a prior limit. So if in 2022, you received a campaign contribution subject to 571 limits, we draw down an amount, how do we deal with that, that amount down, right? So 5,900 right now, any ordinance needs to say nothing until the next election, right? And if it is, you contribute, say, 3,000 right now, our adjuster inflator makes it 3,100 next year, are they allowed to give another $100, right? We need to look at, at those changes and fluctuations of it. The other thing, I am definitely interested in looking at the opportunities to look to the FPPC for a contract for enforcement. I think if the goal here is to, to reduce influence and, and to increase transparency, getting it out of this boardroom and out of this county would help us achieve that. The next part, I'm going to say, and this one is, this one's tough, because prior to 571, we had office holder account opportunities, and as some of us have learned, post-AB 571, we no longer have office holder account opportunities. And what I mean by office holder account is if we are running, say, a town hall, and we want to provide something that is in excess of what our allotment is for community events here, and Supervisor Manfree and I, as officials, want to do that, it is a benefit to the county but will not be at county expense, you used to be able to use an office holder account to, to draw upon those funds. Now, we are obligated to have active campaign accounts open in order to cover office holder account expenses. So that is, that, that kind of changes where we're at, because in 2021, my mindset was that if you are done with your campaign, liquidate the account, donate the proceeds to civic organization, and restart to level the playing field, because what we're trying to do here, if I heard you correctly, Supervisor Gallagher, is to level the playing field. We are effectively precluded from truly leveling the playing field because we have to keep funds in our campaign accounts. So I already have a 2028 account open, which, Mr. Tudor will tell you, if I didn't open it within 30 days of ending my last cycle, it would turn surplus, and I'd have to donate it anyways, and still go through the process of opening a new account. So I say all of this, which is too much information, but to say that if we are in fact going to draw down this limit, we've got to look at a process that envisions that we are going to have open accounts as long as we are supervisors. It just, it's the nature of, of the business. If I, it increases transparency, it's in the very, very burdensome way to us, but I think the corollary also needs to look at, how do we make sure that the fund balance that is in those campaign accounts is not an extraordinary war chest that then can be used in, in exactly the way that we are trying to prohibit here? I think that that is, is also important. The next one, and we've had some experience that I would certainly like more information on, limits do not apply to recall accounts. And we've had this occurrence here in Napa County. Recall campaigns are free game, and then what happens with the money afterwards is also an unknown and not within our purview. And so if we are going to look at restrictions of campaigns, I'd like to also understand what our ability is to limit recalls and those contributions, and our ability to actually close out those recall accounts, because those are, in fact, limited purpose accounts that fall within the same purview of elections, although outside of AB 571. I'm going to buzzer myself and stop.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallagher. Supervisor Alessio.
I'm Ramos.
Ramos. It's definitely lunchtime.
Lunch, that's all.
Supervisor Alessio is out here.
Well, I just want to, I feel like I'm giving a tutorial here, and I appreciate Supervisor Ramos's deep understanding and bringing up some things that weren't on my radar. I have a little bit of a different take on some of this. I, let me say this, let me start with this. Staff, thank you for the time that you did to gather this and put this all together in a way that we can actually understand it and we can reference back to it. So thank you for that, and thank you for the time in terms of, you know, our discussion so I can be more prepared for today and give it some thought. On this, on the overall concept, I don't oppose what's being proposed here in many ways. As somebody who reflects back to my very first campaign, which I would be the first to say, I have no idea what I'm doing, and it was very grassroots, I, you know, getting a boost, somebody to contribute to a campaign, to somebody who's unknown in this political arena, who's just done community work as a volunteer and those kind of things with nonprofits, to receive that, those first couple checks that were really, honestly, I was very surprised, and I'll be frank, it was $5,000. I received a $5,000 contribution. It was the first donation I received. It was scary. It was scary to ask. And the pause, and then, you know, the person's like, yeah, I believe in you, I want, I want, I want you to be able to do this. That $5,000 gave me the lift, the more... the moral lift, the achievable lift to say, oh, I can afford a website. Oh, I can, you know, I can do this. Campaigns, it's all about communication. It's all about introducing yourself to your constituents, to the community, the business community, the residents because they don't know you, even if you're a fourth generation Napa whose family's been here for 140-plus years. They didn't know me. There's a small pocket of people, and I was told this, oh, you think people know you, Liz? Yeah, people don't know you. And they were right. People did not know me in this sense. And so as somebody who, oh, I need to drink water. So I really want to make sure that we really are leveling the playing field. Because now, as somebody who has been fortunate to be in a position of trust and responsibility, my name is known. Good or bad, I hope it's good. My name is known. So therefore, how difficult would it be for Liz Alessio of 2017, who had a 14-month campaign for 2018, be able to compete with Liz Alessio of my next campaign, or let's say 2024? It is impossible to be able to level that playing field. The only way somebody could level the playing field is if they are given a boost, a considerable amount of a boost in terms of being able to get their name to start working on their campaign. And I want to make sure, and this is not for me, this is for the next, the next leaders, the leaders who are out there, the youth who are just, want to give back and they feel called to serve in this capacity. What's interesting to me is that the Levine Act, and it's was, you know, constructed by our state legislators who didn't oppose it, who didn't put it on themselves. That's a bit frustrating. I'm like, if it's that good, you can also put it on yourself. And they didn't. And when that came out, I was shocked. I was shocked that a campaign that, you know, that I went through or anybody goes through, and I'll tell you, I have incredible respect for every person on this dais, for every person who serves in public service because it's a tough one. You're, you do it because for the greater good because you love your community more than you're scared of the other stuff. But it takes a lot. And I want to make sure that that next generation, those young leaders out there have an opportunity to be able to step in and as much as they possibly can, level the playing field. And unfortunately, that requires contributions. That requires funding. So I just really want to put that out there because I see the equity and I've, Ms. Macklin, Sharon and I, we've sat down, we've had lunch about this like two years ago, I think. And I shared my story, I shared my perspective because I don't want it to limit, limit those new leaders. The other thing I want to be careful of is the unintended consequence of something along those lines. And an example of that is when cities were being approached by outside attorneys to force cities into districts. And then this happened to the city of Napa. And at that point, at that time, what had happened is that the interpretation, understanding of the California Constitution was looked at a little bit, it was interpreted differently and it said all cities have marginalized, basically marginalized or disenfranchised communities, basically the old term, that those who live on the other side of the tracks had representation. And so the intention was great. Totally support the intention. But in fact, what happened, because the city moved forward because everybody was losing lawsuits, not one lawsuit, and pushing back, even if they didn't have, like such as Napa, didn't have a disenfranchised community, what happened was, we passed it because it made sense. Why spend all that money? There's going to be lose for the city in time. And what happened is that one of the young leaders of our community who comes from a family history of Pasero family was bumped out of that election, even though he had been in the election for six months. There's no way to keep him in. So it's one of those things I really be, I'm very cautious now as we ask staff to put in, as Supervisor Ramos said, an incredible amount of time. Is it really, is it really, are we, is it really going to make a positive difference? Is it really going to level the playing field? Is it really worthy staff's time? Do, is it, I'm not, you know, I'm open to it. And I appreciate, again, the self-imposing and putting an expenditure limit. I, you know, I was looking at the matrix and looking at, okay, where's it, where does it fit? If we're going to make some changes and do this? Because I'm not against it. I just want to be careful and be really mindful about this decision because it could have an unintended consequence for a new young leader who wants to do grassroots or needs to do a grassroots campaign. And looking at that, and I'll just kind of wrap this up because I've been on my, some box, soapbox of sorts, is I agree, like the current county in terms of we're looking at expenditures. I think that if we're going to do this and we're going to look at, you know, capping it, I'm fine with the $3,500 range. I'm also fine with the state. I'm fine leaving it as it is. I understand, I can argue both sides in terms of keeping it local and having the enforcement local in our, what we currently do. I guess I'm wondering, is this broken? Are we trying to fix something that's already broken? Or are we fixing something that doesn't show that it is broken, but we're just trying to be more proactive on it? So, you know, I'm open-minded. I'm just kind of sharing my perspective and not against it, but I want us to be very cautious in, yeah, moving forward as we continue this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Alessio. Supervisor Manfree.
Wow, thanks for all of those really thought-provoking comments. And I've gone back and forth with staff about this a little bit. So I'm going to try to limit this to things that I'm just, you know, kind of thinking about in this conversation. The most precious resource in a campaign is the candidate's time. And I had my consultant telling me this every time they talk to me. And, you know, it takes time to fundraise. It takes time away from getting out to actually meet people at their doors. If it's something that you have to do, if you have to swing the balance over to fundraising, you don't have as much time to be knocking on doors. And both of those things are really important. And, you know, I would affirm that campaigns are quite expensive to run nowadays. You know, and even though I had an incredibly robust, you know, grassroots campaign with hundreds, literally hundreds of volunteer, active volunteers, there was, there was still a lot of expense related to printing mailers and, you know, running events. And it, what am I trying to get to here? I think, you know, I think we can all agree that there's just a lot of moving parts to a big campaign, one where you're really going to be pushing to reach people. And, you know, I guess, I know, I'm just processing the thinking about, like, how could this possibly work better? Because I absolutely agree that we don't want to be amplifying the inequity that already exists in the community through this process. That's not good. You know, we want to, we want to try to keep all those kind of voices at an equal value. And, you know, you can motivate volunteers with your own values and with your message and with your charisma and just by involving and including them and really listening to them. And that's really meaningful, too. I'm going to say, like, I, you know, I don't know, you know, how do you, how do you value the comparison between getting 20 people out to signway versus getting that $5,000 check and what that's going to allow you to do? You know, they both have value, but they're, they're pretty different. And when it comes down to the impact of one individual choosing one of those actions, you know, it's, they're kind of apples and oranges. And I would, I would echo Supervisor Alessio's question. Is this really broken? And also, you know, do we need to add a layer of complexity? We haven't had very much time pass since the contribution limits were lowered. And I'm kind of wondering, maybe, do we know enough about if they're working? Are they working as intended? Or is it still out of balance with, like I said, trying to keep inequity in people's voices at a minimum? I think that's kind of an open question because it really hasn't been that long. It's been, what, like, has it been two campaign cycles? Since, it was, yeah, since it was lowered. It was lowered between 2020 and 2024, but I don't know if it affected 2022. I don't remember. It did? Okay. So it's been two campaign cycles then. So for, you know, all of us. And something, something, you know, also is how many checks are coming in above the proposed values that we're hearing today? Like 2,000, 2,500, 3,000, 3,500? How many checks really come in above those thresholds per candidate? You know, that's an unknown. You know, if there's not very many, maybe this is kind of a non-issue. But if that's really meaningful, it's more of an issue. I've done a deep dive on maybe five or six different campaigns just to kind of figure out because I had to learn how it works and what's going on and who to call. And all of that's reported in those forums. And, you know, what I noticed in the difference between 2020 and 2024 was that having those lower limits really did start to affect how much funding, you know, candidates supported by certain components of the community we're getting. I think I could see the difference, you know? I mean, that's a little bit anecdotal. But, but I think that's something to think about is that there is information out there that we could pull from to actually have some numbers to see what it, what the shape of this is. Yeah, and I agree with Supervisor Ramos that we would, if we, if we do limits, we would want to have automatic cost adjustments with the mere inflation or some other metric, cost of living, something like that. Because, you know, $5,000 four or five years ago, when I was first campaigning, meant a lot more than it does now, like unbelievably. So because of the inflation we've had. It changes pretty fast. It's been changing fast. And did I get everything? Oh, just one potential unintended consequence might be that if you start to crimp down on how much people can directly contribute to candidates, it creates, it could create a climate where it becomes of more interest to people who really want to influence elections to create PACs. And I think that's something we want to be careful of, too. Because, you know, if somebody wishes they could donate, you know, unlimited amounts of funds to a candidate, but they can't, they have that other option. So that's, that's a balance that I'd want to give some serious thought to striking.
Thank you. I will turn to my other colleagues for their follow-ups. I did just want to add some comments myself. First of all, I wanted to thank Ms. Macklin and the progressive women for the extensive research you all have done on this. It's great to have staff's report here. But, you know, being able to meet with your group and seeing the data that you presented is quite helpful. And I think it's important in this conversation to recognize that there is no universal solution to the money in politics problem. And I think Supervisor Alessio, you're also pointing out, you know, there are some advantages to it, you know? The dollars do send a message of support and allow us to do the things we want to do in the campaign. So I think that I want to echo or support some of what I've heard from Supervisor Gallagher and Supervisor Ramos, that again, this is an effort to level the playing field. I think the numbers you suggested, kind of 3,000 to 3,500 are a middle ground. Again, I really thank staff for this report because we see examples of Santa Cruz County with a $500 maximum, which would be really restrictive and challenging. So I'm not interested in something that restrictive. But I do think that it's worth looking at this contribution limit. And I'm also interested in exploring the voluntary expenditure limits because I think that actually helps the kind of situation you're describing, Supervisor Alessio, someone who's coming into this new, not as an incumbent. And so I'd like to hear more about that. I also like Supervisor Ramos's idea of if we go down this path that we look to contract with the FPPC. So one question that I would have for staff to come back with is what the scope of that contract would look like? I mean, in my view, a powerful enforcement mechanism here will be the press because we will, you know, these numbers are public numbers that people report. And so, yes, we do have to have an enforcement mechanism, but it will also be the community perception that I think is important to note. And yes, we do need some kind of CPI adjuster going forward. I think the other thing that I just wanted to flag is that another reason for me to do this is thinking about, all of us, I'm sure, have received $100 donations. And reducing the maximum donation actually, to me, gives more strength to those $100 donations. And I think that's part of what we want to encourage here is people who are contributing but are not able to contribute at that highest level. We want to empower them to feel like their, their contribution matters, too. So with that, I will turn back to Supervisor Gallagher for some follow-up comments, too.
Thank you. I think, you know, in addition to trying to level the playing field, we have also discussed that, you know, what is the perceived influence of a $5,900 contribution? You know, whether or not that's real, the public does perceive a person who gives $5,900 as having more influence than the person who gives $100. And I agree with Chair Cottrell that it really does help to help everyone who's contributing to feel like their contribution matters and that their voices matter to those candidates. You know, you can't remove the power of the, of being an incumbent. And I don't think that's the point. The point is to make it easier for someone who's not an incumbent to run. And if you are, you know, someone running against an incumbent and you're looking at, oh my God, I got to get a bunch of $5,900 checks because I've got to raise $300,000 because look at what these campaigns cost. I mean, that's pretty daunting. And I don't think that, I think that keeps people away from the idea. It's discouraging for people who may want to run. I don't think that keeping more money in campaigns is better for everybody. I don't think it's, that's better for the new guy on the block. I think that reducing the amount of money that you can receive from an individual and also everyone agreeing to a voluntary expenditure limit, that's what really does make a difference a, a difference in terms of leveling the playing field and making uh public office more accessible. Um, I also wanna say that, you know, the incumbent isn't always uh in a better financial position. Um, you know, when Chair Cottrell and I ran, um, those were open seats. No one was an incumbent. Um, and still, there was a, a candidate who raised almost $400,000. I don't think that you should have to spend $400,000 to run a campaign to be a supervisor in Napa County with a population of, I don't know, 135, 140,000 people. I think that that's absurd. And we should do what we can to make the relationships, uh, the communication efforts, um, all of the things that a candidate should be doing, knocking on doors, um, getting their message out, talking about uh, what they want to do for the county, that, that's more important than raising money. And yes, do you need some money to get your message out? Sure, you do. But it shouldn't be a battle of, you know, who can raise the most money and have the most digital advertising. I mean, I, it's just, it's just gotten kind of beyond what's reasonable. And I think we should do what we can locally uh to try to make it fair for everybody. So. And I do agree with, um, well, I already said I did, with the FPPC contract and um getting more information on that and finding out what that would involve.
Supervisor Alessio, and then I will ask for, um, I'll, I'll get a read from staff of if you need more clarity on, on anything that you've heard.
Thank you. And and thank you Supervisor Gallagher uh for all of your comments and your more recent comments here. Um, I also want to add, cuz it sounds like we may be moving forward and and doing something here. Um, I wa- I like the idea of Supervisor Ramos's checklist. Think that's great. Um, I also wanna thank staff, I meant to thank staff for having a process where electives or were, were notified or the participant is notified of the Levine Act. So in case there was a contribution or they are thinking about sending a contribution, whatever reasons, they understand that there's legislation here. So I think, I appreciate that in part of the process. Um, as I said before, I'm supportive and it looks like we're all gonna be, I'm guessing we're gonna be moving forward here. Um, just kinda recap, I'm supportive of the expenditure limit of Kern County. Um, more good things from Kern County to Napa County. Um, you know, again, um, you know, what was mentioned in terms of how many of those 5,900 or $5,000 contributions, I don't think there are ever very many. But um, I'm fine also with the suggested uh limit if we're, you know, of 3,500 or 3,000. Um, thank you. I meant to mention the inflation, inflation um indicator. That's gonna be really important um, moving forward. And in regarding the FPC, FPPC contract, I'd like to get more information on whether that's really going to help us. I like being able to reach out to our, our office here and because I know them, they know me. They're very responsive, like immediately. There is no delay or anything. And um, so I actually think keeping it local would be my first, my first preference on that. Um, and I think that's it. So I'll, I'll hear what everybody else will say, see if there's a motion and we'll go from there.
So um, this is my question for staff. Do you need a motion at this point?
No.
No, okay. Great. Um, okay Supervisor Ramos.
Thank you. Um, we may not need a motion, but I feel like I need some more clarity. We put a lot on the table. Um, and I think we're putting our staff in an uncomfortable position of having to make judgment calls as to which one they bring forward and which one they don't. That is our job. Um, and so I, I, I think that uh one thing we haven't really uh discussed at length is the corollary of the voluntary expenditure limit and actually what that interplay is with contribution limits, right? If you take the, that is how you get that big money. You take the spending limit and then you get the bigger amount. Um, so uh, and instead of looking really necessarily at just a strict 3,000, 3,500, um, I'm going to um go as far as suggesting that uh the chair appoint an ad hoc committee to work with staff and to bring forth um, a matrix of proposals of what this can look like, given what we have heard today um, on uh contribution limits, voluntary spending caps with a relationship back to contribution limits, an adjustment on contribution limits. And I think for uh FPBC contracting for um Supervisor Alessio, it is merely for the enforcement of it. It is not for the day-to-day of it. So it's just if there is in fact a violation that it go, it step out over to um there, wherever that Sacramento, uh FPBC. Um, I, I think that it would behoove us to be um assisting our staff so that we do not put them in a position of making a judgment call as to what to bring back or not.
Yeah, great point Supervisor Ramos. So I do like the idea of appointing an ad hoc cuz I think some of these questions, it would be helpful for the ad hoc to think through and come back to the board with, you know, maybe two or three different recommendations or, or options. Because I also agree that the contribution, the individual contribution limit needs to be linked with uh, an upward, the expenditure limit if we're gonna head in that direction. So um, I'm going to ask if my colleague Supervisor Gallagher and Supervisor Ramos would be willing to serve on that ad hoc?
Do we need to agendize that?
Need to agenda that.
We do not need to agendize ad hocs because it is the chair's discretion and I feel very voluntold.
I'm happy to serve if that's the will of the people.
Great. Thank you. So then, that, thank you both. Um, I think that ad hoc could then work with staff to come back to the board with some recommendations. Mr. Alstap, did you want to?
I, yeah, I was just gonna clarify. So an ad hoc and you seemingly have um voluntold or however you wanna say it. We have a couple of members that have volunteered for that. They'll work with staff and at some point, staff will bring back an item uh for discussion uh and direction from the full board on some alternatives. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that's clear with everybody and everybody, there's a consensus on that referral. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Then we will go ahead and do that. Thanks to you both for the presentation and for the discussion at the board. Okay, with that, we will then, um, we have no public hearings and no closed session. So I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting Tuesday, April 8th, 2025.